Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Chair of outside, just a few things before we get started. The first thing is, as you may notice, we're not in our usual space in the town boardroom. As a result, the sound system is a little different and has some challenges. So, wanted to let you all know about that. And so, in particular, I noticed when I watched the last meeting, because I missed the last meeting, that if you're at the microphone, one of the microphones, we get you no problem. If you get up and leave away from the microphone, it's only a faint amount of sound that we get. So, if you come to speak and you need to hand something up, if you can just not, either hand it up to one of us, or just not speak as you're going to and from the microphone, we greatly appreciate it. We're just doing the best we can until we have our regular space back. A few other things. First thing is, if you have cell phones on you, if you could do us a favor and turn them off or silence them, because they interfere with our recording equipment. Also, if you're inclined to speak to one another, you can go out into the hallway to speak rather than speaking in the auditorium. We greatly appreciate it, because that also affects our recording system. And I think, other than that, I usually read our emergency exit procedures, but they're a little different, because we're in a different space. So, if there's some kind of an emergency, you would be going out either this exit or this exit to leave the auditorium. They actually, they said that I can use that, they just tell you that? Okay. The last meeting, no, I just went through, but either door is good for emergency exit. And, other than that, we will get started with the agenda.
Okay. There are some changes and alterations to the agenda. I'm gonna read item seven, Thomas Osterhecky, a living trust, Dixon, Dryer, and Lennox applicants. Application 1900158, this is 1205 Major's Path, in North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-78-1-20.1. Applicant appeals the issuance of a pre-existing certificate of occupancy, number C190097, dated April 2, 2019, for the pre-existing non-conforming use for the receipt of natural, organic waste, trees, brush, stumps, leaves, and other clearing debris, and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Okay, got it. We're going to have a brief discussion about, we're gonna adjourn this to a, some sort of date, we'll come up with that date as, during our discussion, correct?
Okay, yes. So, as the board recalls, this is the second application that you have challenging the pre-existing CO on this property at 12:05. It's number seven for tonight, or number seven for tonight and number nine for tonight. We had tried to put them both on for the same night, so that we could, you know, be more efficient with the testimony. There is a lot of public interest in this. We received a letter from Alex Kriegsman, who represents one of, some of the property owners for number seven, and he asked to adjourn this application to March, I believe. He was under the impression that our February calendar was full, and he has some conflicts. I know that the attorney who represents the property owner feels unduly prejudiced by this delay, because it is challenging the use of the property, and they have a pending application before us as well. So, I kind of just wanted to talk to the board about this. I talked to both attorneys, Alex Kriegsman and Mike Walsh about this. They, we can't find another date before March that they can both appear. So, I wanted to ask the board if you want to just split it up and try to get it, you know, try to maybe have Mike Walsh appear first, take the testimony for that, keep it open, and then have Alex come, you know, what's your pleasure on this? Typically, you do defer to the-
I think they should both be heard at the same time, since they're the same issue.
Okay.
I would be okay with one coming in, since it is all back to March, and then the other party can review or testify.
I just think it's too long, and I've reviewed both, and our December calendar is the only calendar that I'm aware of that's full. So, my motion would be to put these over till January 16th for both.
Okay, I can, I can tell you right now, Mike Walsh is available January 16th.
Okay.
Alex said that he could be available for the February 6th meeting. So, arguably, we could take testimony both nights, or you can-
Is Mr. Walsh available for February 6th?
We're gonna put them both on for the 16th, would be my recommendation, because it seems like we're never gonna get everyone to agree. And then we'll make the determination when we get there. Would be my suggestion.
Is Mr. Walsh available on the 6th of February?
On the 6th of, on the 6th of February, I think, yes, I think Mr. Walsh is available-
Are they both available the 6th of February? Or am I just do that?
I think so. But if we wanted to get on earlier, Mr. Walsh can come on the 16th of January.
I'd rather go earlier than 1/16.
That's what I'm saying, arguably-
Put them on for the 16th.
And then they could, and then if one of the attorneys wants to make, you know, a request to adjourn it until February 6th, let them make it, so they're the 6th, they'll make that up.
16th to January?
I agree.
I'll move that we adjourn item seven, which is the Stahacki Living Trust, to the 16th of January.
Do we have a second?
2020.
Okay. Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
All right, so while, so while we're still in, still in the Stahacki mode, Kate? Since we're still in the Stahacki mode, nine is the same. We have jurisdiction to nine also?
Yes, we had already opened that.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn nine, which is also the Stahacki Living Trust-
Yeah, sorry.
To 1/16/20.
Second. Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Chair of outside.
Okay, moving along, item 10 on the agenda, which is Mary C. McDonald, 431 McGee Street, in Tucker Hill, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-158-1-18.1. I'm gonna move that we adjourn that to our January 2nd, 2020 meeting.
Second. Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Chair of outside.
Item 11 on the agenda-
Excuse me, Keith, can I, I just want to ask a question. So, in a case like this, where there's adjournments, and if there's great public interest, can the public call in the afternoon to find out if this has been adjourned, rather than coming to a meeting only to find out that it has been adjourned?
Absolutely.
So, who, who should they, should they call your office, Candace?
Yep.
So, for the public who's here for specific things, if you'd like to call the afternoon of, of a hearing to find out, to confirm that it's still on for the evening, you can do that.
Okay, item 11 on the agenda, which is Connor Friedlander Gateway, 1 LLC, this is 2037, 2045, and 2071 Montalkary and Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-84-1-15, 16.2, and 16.8. I will move that we adjourn this to our February 6th, 2020 meeting.
Second. Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Thank you.
Chair of outside.
Just for the record for this one, it's being adjourned for secret purposes.
Item 12 on the agenda, which is K.A.A.R.P. Management Group LLC, 17 Level Lane in Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-346-1-10. I'll move that we adjourn that to our January 16, 2020 meeting.
Second. Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Chair of outside.
Okay, items 13, 14, and 15, which are all the same locations, J10 and 293 Montalkary, 295 Montalkary. I'm gonna move that 13, 14, and 15 are adjourned to our January 16th meeting, 2020.
Second. Mr. Tud, Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Chair of outside. One other thing I forgot to mention is our next meeting, which is December 5th, that we are having our holiday party, which means we're starting at 6:00 PM instead of 7:00 PM at our next meeting, December 5th. So, just wanted to make sure we're aware of that.
Okay, on the decision calendar, Kevin Mance and Janet Rose Mance has been withdrawn. Margaret N. Conklin, revocable trust, in Watermill, which is Suffolk County Tax Map 900-81-2-24. I'm gonna move that we reopen that, so that we can further extend the written submission date, which will now be 12:05. And I'm also gonna ask for a determination on 12:05.
Okay, so we'll start with a motion to reopen. Do we have a second? Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair of outside.
Okay, written submissions extended to 12:05, and a determination, hopefully, the written submissions will be in before then, and we can have a determination for them also on 12:05.
Second. Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Chair of outside.
27 Dune LLC, in East Quorg, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-386-2-2. I'm gonna have a determination, put that over until February 20, 2020.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
On the Canal Apartments Owners Corp, in Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-258-1-8.1. I'm going to move that we reopen this.
Second. Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Chair of outside.
And then I'm going to adjourn it to our January 16, 2020 meeting.
Okay.
To continue the public hearing.
To continue the public hearing, yes.
Second, okay. Okay. Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair of outside.
And Iver Trattonberg, which is in Watermill, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-67-1-3.2. I will move that we have that determination on 12:05, 2019.
Second. All in favor?
I recuse myself on that application.
Okay.
Okay, and then Julian LLC, which is in Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-134-5-51, and Old Quorg Development LLC, which is in Flanders, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-139-3-34. I'll move that we'll have a determination for those two cases at our December 5th, 2019 meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And finally, Frank Frances, which is in Quorg, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-378-1-5. I'll move that we have a determination, put that over to our January 16, 2020 meeting.
Do we have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, and also, I listened to the tape when I voted on the minutes. I did listen, uh, watch the last meeting, and Mr. De Sessa did an excellent job.
Thank you.
All right, we're back to the beginning of the agenda. All right, item one, which is a minor variance review, 584 Paul's Lane LLC, in Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-87-2-21. Applicant requests relief from town code 330-11, residential district stable of dimensional regulations, for a principal front yard setback of 60 feet, where 80 feet is required for a proposed two-story dwelling, and a non-conforming lot, and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Okay, so Helen, this is yours, no public hearing.
Yes, there'll be no public hearing necessary, and a decision will be rendered at the end of this year.
Okay, do we have a second?
Sure.
Okay. Ms. Burgess. Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa, again.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Chair of outside.
All right, item two on the agenda is Vratko and Dragana Vlatovkovik. I tried. 582 Watermill Town Road, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-45-2-6.4. Applicant requests relief from town code 330-11, residential district stable of dimensional regulations, to legalize habitable space on the third floor attic of an existing dwelling, where a maximum of two floors is permitted, and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Cornelius Kelly, I'm recusing myself on this application.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
Uh, Robert Pachetti, trying to call the applicant.
Yeah, be close to the microphone, it's, uh, sorry, but-
Actually, I think they can, they can hold it.
They could hold it too, yeah.
Uh, Robert Pachetti, trying for the applicant. My client, Dragana Vlatovik, is here with me.
Good evening.
I can swear, swear, uh, your client in. You're gonna state your, uh, you said your name, again, your address?
My name is Dragana Vlatovik. My address is 582 Watermill Town Road, South Hampton.
And do you swear, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I swear to, I'm telling the truth and the whole truth.
Okay, thank you. All right, and tell us about the application.
Okay, yes. So, 582 Watermill Town Road is a 40,283 square foot lot. It's in the R40 zone, located on the corner of Watermill Town Road and Old Sag Harbor Road. It has a CO for an original construction in 1981. After that, there were about 11 updated COs and certificates of compliance, all after 2000, but various trips back by the building department. This is an application, as you said, to legalize the third floor, which is about 310 square feet. There's, it's, it's office space, sitting space, there's no bathroom, it's not a bedroom, it's just a flight of stairs up, there's no door, or anything like that. We understand, sort of anecdotally, that it was built in approximately 2007 by two owners, two owners ago, not the, not the previous owners, and certainly not my client who purchased in 2015. So, when my client purchased, they were represented by counsel, and they did obtain an updated certificate of occupancy, which was part of the, obtained as part of their transaction. And the attic was, of course, missed on that, and I believe missed also on, there was a 2010 updated CO that it was missed on as well. So, my client not realizing that, and I would imagine also, the first depiction of the property they saw was a survey that said two and a half stories. So, that sort of started, you know, the chain of misunderstanding. My client eventually found this out when, after their purchase, they went to go obtain a rental permit for a rental, and it was discovered that this had never actually made it onto a certificate of occupancy. With the application, we submitted a survey of the property, of course.
Rob, just, I'm sorry, catch up, but since, I'm just trying to count my head.
I'm sorry, sir.
Since the third floor area was finished, how many CFOs or updated CFOs were issued?
There were at least two. There was, I can tell you.
I didn't mean to cut you off in-
No, that's okay.
What's, what's in the picture?
Uh, it's a sitting, sitting room. There are some, some photos in your, in your packet.
Sitting room.
Like an office, yes. It's not very much space, 310 square feet, no, no bathroom or anything up there. As I was saying, I did submit as-built floor plans, which you have in your packet, and elevations, and photos of the space. And we did include also an appraisal report from Jason Fisher, an appraiser, who looked at the space and comparable properties, and valued that, that, having that additional space at $100,000. This was-
Could you say that again?
Uh, we had an appraisal done, and the appraiser valued the third floor space at $100,000. We had it-
310 square feet, yeah?
Sure is. We, we also submitted a, an opinion letter from a real estate agent, Lila Carter of Saunders and Associates, and she concurred with that value, and also, she was the broker on the deal, and confirmed as well that these improvements were in fact in place at the time of the purchase. I also submitted some similar decisions, 227 Mid Ocean Drive, and 1050 Head of Pond Road, which was a very similar case that I was actually before this board on about two and a half years ago. So, tonight, and I'll, I'll try to not talk while I do it, but I'm also going to hand out an updated set of floor plans, which also show a proposed sprinkler system for the, yep, which is a requirement- Yes, as part of, as part of the code. And then I'm gonna submit a cost estimate to install the sprinkler system, about $8,000. A cost estimate to demolish the existing staircase and install a code-compliant staircase. These stairs are too steep, so this would all be part of, just, just to, even if we get the approval, to do those things. I also am submitting a, a cost estimate to, just as a hypothetical, if we were to relocate this space, to recover this, this square footage somewhere else for about $150,000. The, the setup of the house and the setup of the lot don't really accommodate doing that, but as a, just to, to, you know, show the value of, of that space, we submitted that, so.
So, this is not the first time we've had an application involving a three-story structure. We have dealt with it on occasion, and we've dealt with it largely in two different sets of circumstances. One set of circumstance is where there is a functional third story on a, on a property, where there are FEMA issues, flooding issues, and the first story, even though it's limited to storage, usually, is deemed to be a floor. And that has to do with the way in which the code was, was changed, actually. But I don't know, the town code, maybe at the state level that it was changed. So, so we hear some of those types of applications, where we actually end up having only two functional stories. And one story, well, well, it's technically a third-story dwelling, we have, we have two functional stories and one story for dwelling, for, for, for storage only. Then we have the rare occasional applications like this one, where we have as-bills, usually, I think pretty much, my recollection is that's generally what we have. And we have a misunderstanding during the, usually, that the purchasing process of the property, where a purchaser of a property, like in this situation, doesn't understand or thought that the, this third-story living area was, approved by the town.
And did take steps to get the updated CO during-
Right, right, right. So, so in those instances, I think, including in, with the variances that you, that you submitted with the application, we at times have granted that relief. I think there might have been a couple of times when we didn't. But, yeah, yeah, but, but, but it is something we tread very carefully with, because in this town, we generally want to have two stor, two, two stories of living space, not three. That's, that's generally what, what we try to encourage people to do. But, but there is, in certain instances, we consider unique circumstances, and this is, there are aspects of this application that are similar to the ones that are in, in the variance, and there may be differences. I'm, I'm not sure, but we, we'll talk about that more.
So, speaking of non-FEMA related cases, I'm also going to submit a couple more decisions, 92 Swan's Neck Lane and 311 Rugg's Path. So, Swan's Neck Lane-
Counselor, you need to speak.
Sorry. 92 Swan's Neck Lane, similar application, purchaser purchased with habitable space, they discovered it later on. Likewise, with Rugg's Path, what the, what the board seemed to focus on, and what we've tried to focus on here, is the, the financial burden, and, on the client, on the, on the applicant, I should say, sorry. Having, having shown really that, that they did purchase that space, and that they did do so in good faith, and that there really would be a loss of value. There is also a Third Department appellate division case, which, which says that if, you know, strict compliance isn't, you know, would cause practical difficulties, then the burden shifts to the, to the town to, you know, explain why the public health and safety and welfare would, would not be served by denying this. I would say, you know, there's, there's gonna be no exterior change, there's not gonna be, the, the average passerby is never gonna really even know about this application. I would argue, there's, you know, there's no change to the character of the neighborhood, there's no, other than the effect to the house, which I think we've covered with the sprinkler system, there's no safety implications or anything like that.
Is there a door leading up to this?
At the top of the stairs, is there a door?
Door open.
Just a doorway.
Door.
Yeah, the door.
Would it just, because I'm building department, sometimes if, if one of the sides is not fully enclosed, so if it's almost a loft area, then you don't count it as a floor, that's not a condition or something like that?
I think that has to have more of an open-
Yeah, so there's no way to do that, or?
No.
Yep. So, I think that there are elements of the variances that you, that, that you've submitted on behalf of, of the application, that arguably are very similar. I'm honestly not sure how I voted on those. I'm kinda curious, because I may have not voted no on them. I may, just knowing me, I just might have.
I believe you voted yes on Silverman, I know that.
Well, maybe not all of them, but, but in any case, we take them as, as they go. But I guess, I, I think probably what would be also helpful, and I'm sure there are members of the board may have questions as well, is wanted to get your, your description as to what happened when you bought the property. So, you can tell me a little bit, tell us a little bit as to-
So, I can tell you about myself, both my husband and I, we are engineers, so we take very carefully purchase, and we relied on the recommendations and opinions by our agent and our lawyer. So, considering that we had all of the paperwork in place, we had updated CO, not just one, but we saw a number of COs, and we learned about the history of the house, because our original house was built in 80s, to which it was added with a second owner in 2007. We bought from the third owner, who added a pool and did some minor cosmetic renovations on the inside. What we understood was that attic space, which is considered as a half-floor on a survey with, which we bought a house, was already done by the second owner. So, considering that we had two updated COs, we had assurance that this was already part of the inspection, and it passed the inspection.
When did you buy that?
In 2015.
So, this is totally inherited issue?
So, considering that the listing was showing that third floor completely finished, the listing that is still publicly accessible, we never assumed that we, we were buying something without a permit. The only time when we discovered that there was no permit was when we invited inspection for the rental. And if we knew that was illegal from the beginning, of course, we would not invite inspection in the first place to expose ourselves. So, that kind of opened the, the kind of worms, and this is like, almost two years later, we've been trying to collect all of the data, who did what, because we needed to kind of have documentation, what we did, and what the previous owners did. And the only thing we did was just, we put a new furniture and changed few light fixtures. So, the, the state of the house that we have right now was already in place before the purchase in 2015. And it was listed with pictures of the interior finished of the attic, which is called third floor, already in 2014, September 2014, based on the listing by Saunders.
So, that's what happened.
How many bedrooms does the house have?
The house has five bedrooms, and four bathrooms.
Strictly office purposes, there's no bedroom in the attic, anything like that?
There is no bedroom, yeah.
But whether there's a bedroom or not, the sprinkler system would nevertheless be required.
That's our understanding, because this is not, we did similar, I had similar project, because I'm involved with a construction.
Right.
And I did go through the various in Albany area, and I know that there is a need for providing the safety path.
Yeah, in case there's a fire, and you're on, someone is on the third floor, and there's no way of, you know, of leaving.
We are more than happy to provide that provision, because for us, if we are going to rent the house, the safety of the renters is very important. That's why we had the inspection in the first place. That's why we had the inspection in the first place.
Service a couple, a couple of things. On the positive side, we may have neighbors here, I don't know, but on the positive side, it's hard to argue that there will be a significant negative impact on neighbors. I think it's, you know, I'm not saying that I couldn't be convinced of that, but I, but I think it would be a hard argument to make, especially considering how small the space is. On the flip side of it, besides having the remedy of coming to us, which you're doing in order to legalize and to correct an error, okay, which I do appreciate, the other remedy will be against your attorney who represented you and the real estate broker. Not that you, that you.
We're not saying you have to do that.
Which was not me, by the way.
I, I, I understand, but, but, but there is another remedy in terms of the financial loss that not, and again, pointing out that that is something, I mean, you were misled, particularly by the real estate broker. You know, but, you know, I think into their, in their defense, getting updated COs is what typically attorneys do in, in situations to make sure that everything is legalized on the property. So what more could they have done without them, you know, had an inkling of this?
That's exactly the point that my agent said. Because I had a buyer's agent, and they just looked at all of the documentation and they relied on the updated COs. And not only one, but two were stating, were issued after the attic space was completely finished. So all of them were under assumption that it was, that everything was legalized.
Yeah, so, so the fact that there were updated COs, including one when you bought the property, to me, I think showed an intention to make sure everything was legal, to protect your interests. And unfortunately, it was missed and things got missed. It got missed by the attorney, it got missed by the real estate broker, and then it got missed by the town.
And the town missed it.
Right, right. So, so multiple, you know, errors took place, and here you are trying to fix it. The thing about it is that, I, just speaking for myself, I don't want to see people all over town saying, "Oh, let's, let's make my attic living space, let's, let's come, oh, I, we, we can really use, you know, extra space and let's make an application to the zoning board." So that's always a bit of a concern in these circumstances.
What makes that, you know, hard to replicate is, is the, the timing factor. I mean, someone would have to have, you know, gone through the efforts of, of trying to, in good faith, you know, get the, their proper permits and having purchased it with that space in place, you know what I mean? So really, someone that would come before you under a similar set of facts would be someone that was also in good faith, sort of duped into thinking that they, they did, they covered all their bases, you know, and so I think that, you know, someone would have to replicate that, that order of events.
And they could be their person.
Yes. So we may, you know, we, we may have a similar circumstance again, but it's a, a unique circumstance. It's not a circumstance that people all over town, the towns of Southampton would be able to establish. So, you know, I, I think that's another factor.
It's definitely not a situation that is a pleasurable situation, because it has hardships of time in order to prepare the documents. There's a financial implications in order to correct this and hope that we'll be still able to use the space. So it's extremely complicated process.
And the concern of, and the concern of losing what you've paid for already, you know what I mean, losing part of the house that you've already bought.
Have you heard from any of the neighbors?
No.
I would just like to add that, that space is contained within the house. There's, it was always part of the house. It was just attic space that was finished by the second owner who renovated the house and added addition in two thousand and seven. So the house as is exists from two thousand and seven, and there are no changes structural from the outside aesthetic, no changes at all. That's why it was not noticed by, no changes would be also noticed if we installed the sprinkler system.
One other question, in terms of this space, if you're going to be using it, do you intend to use it at any point as a sleeping quarters?
No, because this is too far to go up. That's one of the major reasons. And we do prefer to have that just as an extra office space, because my husband and I, we both work sometimes from home, and by having two office spaces, it gives us privacy for the phone calls.
Would you be opposed if the board was so inclined to condition the decision to, as it, so it's just office space?
That would be perfectly fine.
You, you said this came up at, for a rental inspection, right?
Correct.
Okay, so have you, have you been renting out the property recently? I mean, it's rented, or?
No.
It's not rented? I guess because of the space, right?
Yeah, so if we put this condition in, you wouldn't be able to, to rent it as?
As a bedroom.
As a bedroom.
Yeah.
You could rent it, I suppose, as an office space, but, but.
You have to apply to all, I don't know, Health Department, that's not our prerogative, but I don't know, the building department's going to make you go there.
I don't believe they raised that on their review of, for the rental permit. There was no, no issue with the separate.
Okay, well, I mean, I think you, you, the representation is that it's intended to be used for office space, and I think if we grant the relief, I think that's what, I'm getting a sense of what, what the board wants to do. All right, any other questions of members of the board?
I just, I just want to make a comment. I, you know, I, it feels awkward to be in the position of having to approve something that's before us because of potential misleading information, ignorance on the part of others, and then to give permission for something that is put in place as a result of, you know, fire safety zoning codes. So in essence, we're being asked to approve something that's in place for fire and safety and zoning for a reason. And I, I, I am, for one, am not in favor of, of approving this. I just.
I can tell you, Mr. Daly, what was your last?
You don't want me to say that all over again, do you, Helen? I, I for one am not in favor, would, would not approve this.
I'm against it, you.
I, it just seems that we're being put in a position of having to approve something that is, is not really in the best interest of the community. And, and there are people all over this township who are just looking for opportunities to come and see a precedent set on something like this, and then come in and ask for their illegal structures to be approved as well. And I just, I, I don't like being put in that position.
If I would.
I'm sorry?
I don't believe we'll be setting precedents.
I would argue that precedent's already set by these prior cases. I think this case is very similar on all of the significant points to the prior cases, which do set the precedent that, that this board has already kept in line with on, on previous occasions, two thousand and eleven, in two thousand and eight, in two thousand and seventeen, where these factors were looked at and the order of events was, was taken as a very important thing. The loss of value was taken as a very important thing. The fact that it's all contained and there is no exterior change, I think, really was looked at in these past cases and should be here as something that, that means there is no detriment to the public. There is no change, there is no effect on, on the neighbors in any way. And any effect on safety is addressed with the sprinkler system and would be contained to just this house. I think it's, you know, a unique situation, as I said before, where I don't think this precedent could be taken advantage of, because someone would have to have a, a time machine and go back and, and purchase a, a house with a third floor without a CO and try to sort of work their way back from there. So I think there, there is a precedent. I think it's a precedent to, to give a good faith purchaser the benefit of the doubt when, when they have, as is documented, you know, paid for the space and done so in good faith and made the efforts to, you know, to try to do the right thing and cover, cover their bases with an updated CO.
Are you saying, excuse me, are you saying that the sprinkler system is going to be put in?
It has to, it has to be.
Okay, thank you. That's my misunderstanding.
Yes, so this is what I wanted to add.
That helps me, that helps.
What I wanted to add, if we were to build a three-story building in your state, per code, we would have to put a sprinkler system throughout the whole house. So there is no really element of rejecting design with a three floors. There, there is requirement by code to satisfy the fire hazard by having the sprinkler system throughout the whole three floors. In a case of, in this case, for the projects that I was involved, it was always required to install the sprinkler system to cover the exit path. And that's what we are proposing to install completely, actually, that's increasing the protection of the residents of us.
You're sprinkling all three floors?
We are sprinkling the path between.
The path, the third floor and then the pathway down.
Exactly, so that should be completely sprinkling the system on the third floor.
Second and first.
And then all the way to the second floor, the path you can see from the drawings, and also to the first floor out through the door. So that actually increases the safety, because right now there are no sprinkler system. And if you have just a two-story building, there would not be sprinkler system over the staircase. So we are actually increasing the safety. That's our proposal.
Okay, thank you. That, that helps me. I thought you were presenting this as part of the reason, the expense.
Oh, no, 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 we just were showing that to comply is still not going to be free. It's, it's still, you know.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, is, are there any other questions of members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening in connection with the application? I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing it, Lakovic. This is for five eight-two Watermill Toward Road in North Sea.
All right, so you didn't hear no one. We wait on anything, Candace? No? Motion to close determination, our next meeting, which is twelve five.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Mr. Kelly recused himself.
Accused himself, okay, Mr. Kelly recused himself, I forgot. Ms. DeSessa.
Aye.
Chair of society, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Those are previously well-written decisions, I'll say.
Okay, item three on the agenda, which is James Conforty, one oh two Lake Drive, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash twenty-eight dash one dash thirty, applicable because of recent following provisions of the town code for a proposed dwelling with covered porches on a non-conforming lot. Three thirty dash eleven Residential District Stable Dimensional Regulations to allow the height of the proposed dwelling to be thirty-four feet, eight and a half inches, where maximum height thirty-two feet is permitted. And three thirty dash eighty-four D Pyramid Height for a proposed encroachment in the amount of one hundred and ninety cubic feet, plus or minus, and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Good evening.
Aye.
Just have to swear you in unless you're an attorney.
I am not.
Okay, so you can just state your name and address.
James Conforty, one oh two Lake Drive, Southampton.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, you can tell us about your application.
Certainly. First, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to review the application.
Just agree if that might be.
And just hold the right attorney, otherwise we can't hear you.
So in planning this home, we went to Great Lens to design a home that is size appropriate for the property, the neighborhood, and one that adds value to the surrounding area. The home takes a cues from the Low Country Beach Cottage and is only approximately two thousand square feet. I'd like to mention that the original plan did fit all the height and pyramid calculations as required. Unfortunately, as we began demoing the original cottage and excavating the foundation, we discovered that the rumors of a high water table in the area were true. We discovered at least two feet higher water being exposed than what we had thought it was. And I have pictures.
Two or three feet. We don't get you on the microphone if you're not near, you step away, sorry.
It was about two feet.
Yep. We're going to be dealing with this for a while until we're back in the town boardroom. Sorry.
So as you can see, as the backhoe and the size of the, the bucket, that as we hit a certain level, we experienced an awful lot of water. So what we were able to do is reverse engineer and figure out what makes sense in terms of minimizing the impact for the height of the house, but also protecting the home in terms of prudent building techniques. So we just, like I said, we discovered the, the water at least two feet higher than we had hoped, as demonstrated by the pictures. We consulted our engineer, Paul Delandro of Delandro Andrews Engineering, realizing that we'd not be prudent to proceed with the original foundation design. We submitted a letter which documents his concerns, and he states, "These difficulties would also result in future loss provided a failure of waterproofing, preventing infiltration of groundwater into the basement. Increase in the building height and decreasing the height of the foundation eliminates these construction difficulties and uncertainties." So to be clear, we were, our goal was to build a, a nine-foot ceiling for the basement, but we're going to go to an eight-foot ceiling in an effort to make this less of an impact. The increased height is literally only two feet, one inches. That's at the very peak of the home, and it runs along the ridge. There's a second area on the first floor elevation that is also, that impacts on a pyramid. So the pyramid impact is a hundred and seventy-seven cubic feet in total. But it's also, as I indicated, it's on the first floor level and is a very small section. We were sensitive to the perceived impact on our neighbors and reached out to the adjacent properties who felt would be possibly impacted, and to explain the situation, address if there were any concerns. All three of the neighbors, the adjacent on either side and the one in the back, all submitted letters indicating the support for our proposal.
What's the height of the ceiling on the first and second floors?
The first floor is ten feet and the second floor is nine. On the second floor, there's actually knee walls in our bathroom, so any change in that would severely impact what we can do in that structure. The ten-foot ceilings, we, just in view of the fact that it's a two thousand square foot house, the reason we went to that height is really because it just offsets the, the feeling of closeness. So in other words, it's seventeen hundred square feet on the first floor approximately. The ten-foot ceiling just makes it feel like a more comfortable home. So what we've tried to do is try, offset the sense of building a quote-unquote McMansion. And we couldn't because of the lib, lib, liberate, excuse me, the limitations on the property, but at the same time to give the, the comfort, the feeling for the quality of the home that we're building.
So I just, I personally have never in an X zone voted in favor of a height variance. I have no issue with the pyramid variances, because they're, they're moderate. But the, the height, even when people have come in just as recently to ask for a cupola for an aesthetic design, I personally just don't, I think you can make it work, you have thirty-two feet. So you have a significant amount of space there. I understand there's a water table, but it, it's not in a FEMA, and in those FEMA zones, that basement that you're, you're benefiting from those, in a FEMA zone, you can't do that. So there's just a piling and, and that, that creates the height. So I'm fine with the pyramid personally that you're requesting. I don't think it's an issue at all, but I would, I would have an issue with, with the height. I think you could do something to eliminate that.
Well, the, the reason it would never come up in a FEMA and there are, you know, we're, exactly, we're not, we're in the X zone, but we're literally across the street from it. But the reason it would is because this is what I'm being told and what it certainly seems like, it's an underground river. So where FEMA is looking for, you know, flood issues, they would never have the ability to even look into a flood issue that's going to be caused by an underground river. So that's, that is unfortunate that it would have been qualified, you can make sense out of. And that we're having the same situation. So FEMA regulations or, or the allowances for a FEMA issue is so that a foundation doesn't have exposure to being flooded. So if you, if I have a wet basement, it severely impacts the value of this house. And we're even going into the expense of putting a, a very high-end, I mean, a high-qualified waterproofing system. It's literally.
You're going to mat lab it so that it's usable space?
Well, actually, we're using a polyurethane geomat, yes. So it's about twenty percent, excuse me, thirty percent more expensive, or thirty percent of the cost of my foundation itself. It's, it's a very expensive situation, because we're trying to make sure that we don't have the impact that, that could happen.
Well, I share, yeah, yeah, I, I share Mr. DeSessa's concern about the height. No problem with pyramid relief. Ten-foot-high first floor.
10-foot-high first floor seems to me to be a lot, that it could be reduced. I'm not saying I would, speaking for myself, that I would give zero height relief, but it seems to me that we could reduce significantly.
Well, even if, even if we reduce it, the, I'd say to nine feet, it's still going to be over. So we're not eliminating it.
Oh, I understand.
So it minimizes it, but we've already tried to minimize it with the eight-foot ceiling in the basement. And I would hope not to impact it on the 10-foot. I'll be honest with you, I, always honest with you, but I actually reached out to my architect in terms of that because I wanted to get ahead of it. And this is his response. "In my experience, we're doing 10-foot ceilings everywhere except low-cost, affordable housing, under $250,000. And in houses that approach $2 million, we are doing 11 to 12 feet." He's not from Southampton. This is from Buford, South Carolina.
Maybe they don't have height restrictions on their houses.
I gotta be honest with you, I'm sort of with Mr. Grossman and Mr. DeSessa. So that's three. You've got to count to four before it's over.
I mean, they could change the pitch. He could, you have, you know, a lot of height there, so he could flatten the pitch. I'm not saying a flat roof, but you could flatten the pitch, change your knee wall height and comply with the height.
Well, the knee wall height, what would happen is that it's in a bathroom space, so it would encroach on our ability to put that bathroom space because I don't know the exact size off the top of my head.
If you flatten out the pitch, your knee wall height can go up and you would still comply with the height.
Right now, it's a 10, 12 pitch, which was reduced from a 12 pitch.
Okay. Well, here's what I can, what I can say. I'm not sure that you have four votes for what's the application that's in front of us. Just heard three board members have expressed concerns. I haven't asked the other four board members where they are.
I'm with you on the height. I'm good with the pyramid, but.
Yeah, okay. So that's four. That's four. So we got, I think what I'd like you to do is to figure out what you can do to reduce the height and come back.
Okay.
I would like to see the house height comply. I'm obviously fine with the pyramid, no problem, but I've never even stepped foot in a house with a 10-foot ceiling and floor. So I would like to see the height variance comply with the 32 feet.
And I hear everybody and I will do, but I know one of the big goals is to make sure that neighbors are approving a situation, and I do have documentation from all the neighbors supporting this.
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you very much.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay, for that, that's where you are.
Do we have copies of the letters from the neighbors?
We do.
Yeah, send me back. Send me to the cabinet.
Thank you.
Listen, a lot of people come here, they want what they want, when they want it. Not going to always get that. You've got to be, like I said before, you've got to be able to count to four. You want an approval, you can't count to four, so go back to the drawing board a little bit.
How much time do you would need to go to your architect or whatever, get some options?
Oh, let me do that too. Yes. That's okay. Thank you for mine.
It would take quite a bit. He is from out of the area and has to coordinate with the engineer. And the other issue is that we're walking right into the winter time period, which is, we would like to have been able to enclose the building, so.
I understand, yeah.
So it is a very tough situation. And then honestly, I have financing on the back end of this that becomes a timing issue also.
So when do you want to come back, is the question?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
We can put you on for the next agenda, but you won't have the plans. That's the question.
I will, if you could put me on and if I find out this week that I can't get it turned around, I will call up.
Just adjourn it again?
Yes.
Next meeting, you want to, December 5th? You want to do that?
19.
19, 19.
We can come on the 5th. The 5th is fine, I just don't think you're going to have your plans ready because they also have to readjust the pyramid totals as well.
Yeah. And speaking of which, we did have a building department comment from Dennis O'Rourke. And I don't know whether this was addressed already. Yep.
Put it over, sir.
Yes, on the back.
On the bottom.
It says, "The pyramid diagram shall be revised to include the encroachments of the eaves."
Oh, we did, that.
You did that?
That has been updated.
Okay, okay, no problem. Just wanted to make sure.
That was the copy that I just had in my hand.
Okay, very good. But before we do anything further, got to ask, any other questions of members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Conforti for 102 Lake Drive in North Sea? If not, Jason.
I would like to make a motion to keep the public hearing open and adjourn this matter to our next meeting on December 5th, 2019.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Ms. DeSessa.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Chair of SAI, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, item four on the agenda. It's John T. Blood, Blodorn, Uncle E., Blodorn, 25 Highview Drive in New York, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-24-1-87, Appicent Request for Determination as to whether or not the proposed one-story accessory structure with attached garage is a subordinate or incidental building pursuant to Town Code 330-5 definitions because of its size in proportion to the main dwelling and its use. In addition, Appicent Request for Relief from Town Code 330-11.2G1, accessory apartment special standards to allow the total floor area of the accessory apartment to be 46.5% plus or minus the total floor area of the principal dwelling in Town Code 330-11.21 to allow two access driveways, where only one access driveway shall be permitted on a lot having an accessory apartment area and a beneath necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Good evening. Just have to swear you in unless you're an attorney.
I'm not an attorney.
Okay, you can state your name and address.
John Blodorn. Address is 25 Highview Drive, Sag Harbor.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing about the truth?
Always.
Okay, you can tell us about the application.
Okay, the application is a, for an accessory apartment, just for the whole thing is that my wife and I have a house that we, a little large for what we need. My son lives in Sag Harbor as well, and he's got a growing family, and he needs some more space. So what we're proposing to do is he's going to take over the main house, and we're going to move into the accessory apartment. And that's, that's it in a nutshell. As far as the two driveways, they've been there since I built the house in 01. There's no additional driveways going in.
Do you ever set a floor plans for the accessory apartment? I didn't see it in my application.
Yeah.
Was that this?
They were submitted.
You might have, it might have just, I just didn't see it, I was just looking for.
Is this it?
Thank you. How big is the accessory apartment?
The habitable space is 877 square feet.
And two bedrooms?
It fits, it's two bedrooms.
Okay.
It fits within the minimum-maximum square footage for an accessory apartment. It's just that the main house is not quite big enough to cover what we want to do.
This is for the record, we have some of this, but if you're watching.
It's 26, 2700 square feet.
Such a modest size.
It's not a, it's not a huge house.
You don't have a growing family, Mr. Tudhill?
When, we had.
The guy is grown.
We had four kids, four kids in the house at the time it was built.
Have you heard from any of your neighbors?
Just one, and he was in favor of it, so.
Okay. So there are two aspects of this application. One aspect is whether the two-story accessory structure is a subordinate or incidental building.
It's not a two-story. It's a one-story.
Okay, well, let me see how it was advertised. Whether the, one-story. My, I wrote it down wrong. One-story accessory building is with attached garages is a subordinate or incidental building. So in any case, that aspect of the application is an interpretation of our board. My understanding is this building is 46.5% of the size of the primary dwelling?
Right.
Okay, so.
Does that include the garage, Adam?
Does not include the garage.
No, it goes to 64 with the garage.
It's what?
I see.
64 with the garage?
64 percent with the garage.
Because that all has to be taken into account.
I was told the garage did not enter into it from the building department, so. They're asking that we include it now, so we're, you have all the numbers, so we're just putting them on the record and discussing them.
Yeah. So the way in which this is interpreted is that if the size of the accessory structure or structures, really usually the structure, is 25% or less of the size of the primary structure dwelling, then the building department will deem it to be accessory because of its size. If it's greater than 25%, the percentage, then the building department, even though it's not in our zoning code, sends it to us to make an interpretation as to whether the accessory structure is in fact accessory. One of the factors is the percentage. Another of the factors is, I think that we generally look at, is what the use is of the accessory structure. So that's one aspect of the application. And it's interesting that we're talking about that between the two structures at 64%, which is a big number. And then the other aspect of the application is the relief for the accessory apartment that's being requested, including, actually, it's the size, 30, oh, 46.5 is the percentage, that's why I got, I confused the two things. Yep, yep, okay.
Where's the 64?
64, 64, I see. Yep, okay. So it actually is 64. And then relief to allow two access driveways, where one access driveway is permitted, so.
But on the main house, there was a two-car garage, but it's underneath the house, so that's, that's not included in your, the figures for the main house.
For the square footage? You have a whole finished basement?
It's a garage.
It's a garage. The basement's not finished, but the garage is. That's underneath the house.
Okay.
So that would have to be added on to the other square footage, would bring it back down again.
So is the 64%? It's kind of like, it's 64% of the main dwelling?
The percentage ratio of the size of the accessory building with attached garage in comparison to the main dwelling is approximately 64%. That's from the building department.
Gotcha.
That's the main dwelling without the garage space that it does include. So that would have to be added in to.
Correct, because you're, we're including the garage space.
You're including the garage in one, but not the other.
Not the others, right, right. How do we do that, Katie? Do we change that calculation? I'm just asking. I don't know the answer to that question.
What is the question?
So we're including the garage space in the accessory structure for size?
Yep, yep.
But the garage space in the main dwelling is not included in the main dwelling calculation?
Is the garage attached to the main dwelling?
It is.
Yeah.
It's underneath.
It's underneath.
It's under.
How many square feet did you say the main dwelling was? Because the numbers don't seem to be adding up to percentages. I thought you said 2,600?
Yeah.
Main.
26 to 27.
The habitable space is 1,884. It's like 26, 27.
1,884 is the main house.
Habitable space.
Okay, that's, that's.
Okay, there you go.
Small, modest house.
So in any case, so there is some discussion about this percentage. I wanted, I just want to make sure the percentage is calculated correctly.
Candace said that the garage, the garage should be included in the house as well. It's all attached. So that'll make the house bigger.
You do the size of the structure? You count everything.
Okay.
You do the accessory apartment, it's just the habitable.
All right. So that would mean that the percentage would go down.
Correct, we just need the size of the garage for the main dwelling.
Okay, so we're going to need that new calculation.
Okay.
Yeah, the new percentage. All right. Let's see if anybody's here. Yep, yep. But we also just had, see if there's anything else in the building department worksheet. Comments from Dennis O'Rourke, Principal Building Inspector. One, the plans for the main dwelling shall be sealed, signed, and dated. Did we get those? Did you get plans for the main dwelling that are sealed, signed, and dated? Wasn't Dennis's notes?
You have a set of plans.
I don't think so.
I know, but they have to be signed and sealed, so sometimes we get them without that.
They had the original seal.
I understand. I just want to make sure we got what we need. And this is not coming from us, it's coming from the building department, so.
I don't think so. Cornelius, can you look in the folder? We haven't gotten any recent, we haven't gotten any written stuff since this has been filed, yeah, so.
No, okay, all right. And you can, you can speak with Candace or speak with Dennis O'Rourke about this. They're just trying to make sure the things, that we have what we need. Number two, page two of the plans last dated August 9, 2019, of the accessory apartment shall be revised to accurately indicate the habitable square footage calculation, which I think we've really been talking about already. And three, the percentage ratio of the size of the accessory building with attached garage in comparison to the main dwelling is approximately 64%. So we want to make sure the percentages are right. So maybe you can.
Yeah, calculated by an architect is typically how we have those numbers.
Correct. We just want to make sure the numbers are right.
Yep, all right.
So if you can reach out to Mr. O'Rourke about that.
Okay, the numbers that are on here are not sufficient. He had the, the architect has it on here.
Yes, speak with him about it, and if they need to be changed, then we would just need them revised, if that's what he, that's what he wants.
Okay.
All right.
Is the board okay with the two driveways?
Yeah, we didn't really talk about the two driveways.
Man's with Jordan.
They were, they were there when I built the house.
Okay.
In 2001.
All right.
And they were on the original C.O.
Okay. Are we okay with two driveways?
They're shown on the survey, I guess.
Yeah, not really. No, I, I mean, this is, in essence, is going to become a property with two separate houses on it, with the two structures and the two driveways. I'm not sure how I feel about that. No, I agree, it's like a subdivision. Yeah, it's basically, in essence, kind of subdivided, you know, going to be one property with two houses on it with separate driveways. So again, I.
So what's marked on the survey is stone dri, the two stone driveways, those are existing, it's just the blue dots here proposed. So it's in addition to the one already existing driveway.
So sir, if we grant, if we end up granting the relief for the proposed one-story structure, would you be able to use the stone driveway in between that building and the two-story and get rid of the other stone driveway?
Which other stone driveway? The one on the other side they're propping?
Like, do you, do you enter your home right here?
We're not going to get it on tape if we have a conversation there. Do you want, you want to turn, turn the microphone?
Yeah.
Yeah, there we go.
This driveway we could do without, not this one down here.
Okay, I see.
This is being added because you require a parking space for the accessory.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, that was to provide the parking space that's required.
Okay. So we have granted second driveways in the past where there is an accessory apartment. We do that from time to time, but sometimes we don't want them. So I'm just trying to get a sense so that the applicant can know where we are. are.
I think we need to get our numbers straight.
Well, we definitely have to need, need to get the numbers straight, but also, do we need to, is the board okay with two driveways? And I'm just trying to get a sense of that.
I don't have an issue with the two driveways.
Nor do I. You're all right with it?
That's assuming that you'd be able to have the accessory apartment, so that you would need the driveway.
Yeah.
So we want to, that's why, again, the numbers...
The house, the house is, the house is built into a hill. The main, the garage is below the house, and that driveway comes in on a lower level. The other driveway is for parking to come in the front door. It's, it's, you know, we're here. That was the reason it was done that way, and it was like that from the time I built it.
Since you already have...
I'm, I'm okay with the second driveway. I don't see how somebody would be able to get to the structure without...
Since you already have, since you already have the two driveways existing, you're expanding one to add to parking. Right, exactly.
Right, we're just putting a parking space on the one that's already there.
Right. I have no problem with the application, however, we do need to get the correct calculations for the building.
All right, so you need, you need the garage space in the main house added on to the calculation against what we have on the accessory structure.
And making sure the percentages are correct.
Correct.
That's all, which may require your submissions being, your documents are submitted being revised. So the survey may need to be, I don't know if the survey has percentages on it, but whatever, whatever documents refer to, the percentages would need to be amended if you're, if you're changing them.
And we need the plans signed, sealed, signed, and dated.
Yep.
All right. I don't think we need to see you come back, we just need those in a written submission.
Just a written submission is good?
Yeah, yeah. We just can't act until we have those. My question is, how much time do you need?
So I'm clear, the, the original plans, do you need them signed with a redated and signed, or just the original plans?
The original plans just, just with, just as...
When you set a floor plan, it's signed and dated.
Those I did, I did submit that, I don't know where they went.
Okay.
Give me one.
Yep, don't know what happened there. Okay, but, okay, but before that, I do want to ask, any other questions, amendments to the board?
Is it possible to keep it open so that when he brings the numbers back, I can discuss that with him when he has his new numbers?
Well, it's up to the, up to the rest of the board as to whether we want...
I'm, I'm okay with written, written subs.
Okay. Where are we with, uh, written subs?
I'm okay with written subs.
I'll be up and coming back.
Be okay with closing it, I mean, with written subs.
Okay.
Have no problem with written subs.
Okay. Cornelius?
That's four. I'm okay with written subs as well.
Okay, it's gonna be with written, written subs. Any, is there anyone from the public who'd like to be here this evening, catch you with the application of, of Lodor, I think it's?
Lodor.
Lodor. Okay, and this is for 25 Highview Drive in New York. Okay, if not, Cornelius?
So how much time did you say you needed to get that paperwork?
Excuse me?
How much time do you need? Two weeks, four weeks, six weeks?
Probably have it the end of next week.
You'll have it the end of next week?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll close the hearing for the public portion and leaving it open for written submissions only with a decision at our December 5 meeting.
Second. Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. DeSessa?
Aye.
Mr. Daly?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill?
Aye.
Mr. Hahn?
Aye.
Chevazai? Thank you for being here, have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Good to...
Item five on the agenda is Dana R. Rubin and Robert J. Gottlieb, 60 New York Harbor Road, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-4-1-73. Applicant requesting relief from Town Code 330-84D Pyramid Height for a proposed encroachment in the amount of 4,386 cubic feet. 1,795 cubic feet on the west side, 2,591 cubic feet on the east side. Proposed two-story dwelling on a non-conforming lot, any other relief necessary.
Could the applicant please come up and bring the affidavit of posting? Hello, Dr. Gottlieb?
Thank you.
Board has jurisdiction.
Good evening, Robert Merrahue, 250 North Sea Road, Southampton, New York, for the applicant.
Okay, and you're an attorney, so I don't think I have the story yet. Okay, so tell us about the application.
It's a half acre in an R-40 zone, and this board granted relief, among other things, or inter-alia of pyramid relief back in May of 2018. And candidly, at that point, we should have asked for the relief that we're requesting tonight because of things that developed in the future where conservation has caused us only to have a five-foot backyard off of the house, the rest of it is all non-disturbance zone. The neighbors built a pool basically on the property line, and it was decided that instead of having the cupola and the, and the deck on the second floor, that that should just be a sitting room and remove the cupola.
All right. So, total amount of pyramid relief is 4,386 cubic feet?
Well, that was what was granted.
Previously granted?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so what's the amount that's being requested now?
Well, the total amount would be a total of 4,977, and the reason that number doesn't jive with what's here in the, is because I had the architect go back and shave off 391 cubic feet from the original plan, so that that was almost 400 feet less than was requested and granted back in May of 2018.
So you're looking like eight, for 800 feet of additional relief?
Yes.
Roughly.
Roughly, yep.
So the previous variance means nothing now? You're basically, there's a whole new plan?
No, it's the same plan, it's just, the construction started, they had the foundation and the deck, and then the builder, they stopped building to submit this application to this board, and they had revised plans drawn by Sean Leonard and revised the site plan to conform with the shaving of the 391 cubic feet, as well as the addition of the requested relief that we're here for tonight.
It's nice to see not an ASBIL come before us. We appreciate that they came to ask for permission instead of rebuilding.
No.
Do we have revised plans, Bob?
Yeah, I believe they were submitted.
I'm looking at a set of plans, so, yeah.
Okay.
So it's not 4,386, it's 4,977?
With, if the relief is granted tonight, the total would be the 49...
4,977.
4,977.
We don't have new plans.
Here, piss this out. This is set. Tell him to make that. Keep with us for a second.
Yeah. Take your time.
We just want to make sure. You can have it, whoever. Yeah, yeah, come easy. Everybody down.
Is that the totally stop now?
Okay. And we did get correspondence from the board of trustees, carnets. Okay. Okay, have you heard from any of your, of the neighbors?
No, actually, two of the neighbors, well, it's only really two neighbors, they both said fine, they had no problem with it.
Okay.
You need relief for the garage, too. Is that new?
No, no, that was relieved, that's 591 cubic feet.
That's not changing.
No, nope. But that was granted in the May 2018 decision.
Do you know what the original request for relief was, cubic footage was, in the original decision, the original application?
I believe it was what was originally requested.
It was granted, was requested.
Yes.
3,404.
I'm sorry?
The previous variance said three, granted 3,404, I think.
Okay. It's, it is in a FEMA zone, but, but it goes right up to the house. However, just as an aside, NOAA has already undertaken to replace the 1988 datum that is used by all surveyors, which, so that's gonna be used starting in 2022, and that is most assuredly gonna push that house into the FEMA zone.
How big is the house?
Uh, it's, I believe it's five... I have to ask, shall I swear in?
Yeah, bring him up.
Sure. Okay, so I've said the story, and if you can just state your name and address, please?
Dana Rubin, 60 New York Harbor Road, Sec Harbor.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing about the truth?
Always.
Okay.
Dana.
So, you're free to tell us what you'd like to tell us.
You just, that's what the square footage was, I believe it's 3,300.
Okay.
Thirty-three, thank you.
Yep, yep. Okay, it's okay. Thirty-three hundred.
It's for the proposed house under this application, is that right?
Okay.
Does that larger, that larger than what you were proposing during your first?
I think it's gone up 400 feet.
The second floor is being fully built out versus just the sitting area, it appears.
What we did was, there was supposed to be a rooftop deck over there, we just...
Enclosed it.
Enclosed it. So we wouldn't hear the noise of the kids at the pool that they've just put right underneath, and also, they'll give us, we realized once we dug the foundation, there was this big pile of dirt, we climbed up there, and the view from up there was not to be believed, so we just thought better to have a room that we could use 12 months out of the year, since we do live here full-time.
And you haven't heard from any neighbors, right? Everyone's okay?
Everyone's okay. We've got great neighbors.
Comments from...
Yep.
Ducks, ducks and fish.
Well, that's the Lesers and Tomar and his kids next on the other side.
It is. So here's what we got from Mike Benakasa, Chief Building Inspector. Make sure I have that one, I do. The relief requested for the stairs located 10.5 feet on the westerly lot line in the application is not required. The deck with attached stairs is considered to be an accessory structure. The single and separate certs submitted with the application indicates that the subject property has been held in single and separate ownership since October 14, 1957, therefore, the allowable accessory structure setback is 10 feet, since the lot area of the property is 20,437 square feet.
Helpful, less relief.
Yeah, yeah.
That was one of those things where we went to the building department one day and asked President A, and they said yes. You want me to go on?
Nope, we...
Okay, been there, done that, right?
Yeah, yeah. But the thing that's a little unusual here, and I just want to make it clear on the record, is our advertisement for the, for the application was relief for a total amount of 4,386 cubic feet. That's why I asked that, you know, originally, for a proposed two-story dwelling. And what I'm gathering from the discussion that's happened tonight is that the actual additional relief is 800 cubic feet, and that this was, that figure, the 4,386, may be the original relief of 3404 from the prior variance plus the additional 800 feet. Or am I getting that wrong?
Yeah, the, the whole thing is very confusing, that's, that's why I'm saying, what, what this board needs to do is to, to just modify the prior variance, to get the pyramid encroachment correct, to substitute the plans. But Bob, you have to meet with the building department, because these plans talk about the prior variance, which you can't, you can't have both. You know, like, this, the pyramid here, you know, refers to encroachments from the prior variance, but it's, you know, we're looking at this like, the plans have changed, the pyramid numbers are different, we want plans that say what it is now.
And we did that on purpose, because we wanted to make it clearer for this board to understand what they granted and what we were requesting, but we're...
Sure, I mean, you can see what they granted in the prior variance, but I'm saying, these plans now have to show us what, what you need.
Did that 34 include the garage or not include the garage?
The prior variance? Is that what you're asking me?
That, that number, what that number was, was the garage not? Because I'm even confused by this.
The garage number is 5...
91.
581, which brings you to a total of about 4,800, so it's unclear in our paperwork. So I, I think you, what I'm hearing from the board is you have the support to do this, and we want to let you do this.
Thank you.
We just need to make sure that everything is correct here, so that when you go back to the building department...
Right.
You can continue forward.
So I guess that means the architect?
Yes.
Think so, think so.
And your attorney?
Yes, yeah. So, so here's the thing that confused me, and I, and, you know, I'm just letting you know kind of where, you know, I want to make sure we get this right, okay? So I have an original, the prior variance was 3404 cubic feet. I have during the presentation about additional 800 cubic feet, but also in the presentation, the total was 4,977. That's, that's what you had indicated?
And it's unclear if that included the garage or not?
The prior variance included the garage. It, it, the prior variance says 3,404 for the dwelling, 591 for the garage.
And that totals what?
3,995. I mean, they're both close, so I don't think there's a problem with, you know, swapping them out, it happens.
They're just clearing up the...
I want to make sure everybody on the same page. He did, he did. But, but then, we, we talked about the prior variance, and then, but you said, you said total, and then we're kind of dealing with multiple numbers. Just want to get it right, that, that's all. No worries, just want to make sure that the record is clear on this, and, you know, I think probably in a written submission...
Then you have to come back and see us, and you can continue on and build, that's the goal.
Yeah, yeah.
Say that again? Continue on and build?
Once we get this cleared up.
Okay.
Yep.
If all is well, but of course, we, you have to have, you know, a vote and a variance issue.
What, what would you like me to do to expedite this?
Need you to have a conversation with the building department, and, and I think Candace and Katie as, as well, and then written submission should be fine in terms of just clarifying it.
Thank you.
As to, as to what the, the correct figures are. That, that, I think should do it. However, in the meantime, I wanted to ask, are there any questions, amendments to the board? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to be here this evening, catch you with the application of Rubin and Gottlieb? This is for 60 New York Harbor Road in New York. Okay. So the other thing I just wanted to mention in terms of this, this application, is that it's absolutely worth mentioning that this is a constrained parcel, and so there are limitations on it. So there's a reason that you're in this situation, where you're having to have a pyramid relief in order to have a, a structure that's, that's usable.
We also wait for con board, conservation board.
Right.
It was referred down to them in the wait for...
Yeah, so that's just a referral report that we'll get from them.
Also, Candace just pointed out, which now makes sense, the reason it's advertised for the, where is it, the 4,386 is because Dennis took out the 591 cubic feet of pyramid relief that was previously granted and is reflected in the plans. So that's why this is different.
Dennis O'Rourke from the building department.
When we write it up, we wrote it up for the, for the dwelling, because the garage had already been granted.
To be a little more, the garage was attached?
Right, right.
So the architect took the detached structure and added it to the house. So you should have two different numbers. You have your 591 for your garage, and then you have your 4,386 for the house.
But the only thing that's changed is the house.
Correct. And we love a challenge, so whenever there's something to be corrected, we're, we're thrilled to assist.
I'm getting too old for a challenge.
Okay, so no one from the public? Mr. Mike, it is yours.
I have no idea what to do at this point.
Well, I think we're gonna be...
Someone help me with this.
I'd make a motion we can have.
I mean, I, I get it, I get the general idea, but we're gonna make a motion.
Wait, hold on one second.
Close?
Bob, did you go to the conservation board? We referred it to the conservation board. Do you have to modify a permit?
Nope, I met with Marty twice, and he looked at everything, and he was like, no, it's all good.
Okay.
So we're gonna wait for a...
Close.
We're gonna close the public hearing. We're gonna wait for written subs from the applicant to have a clarity on the cubic feet that's going to be requested, and for written subs from the conservation.
Correct, correct.
Second.
Okay, and then we're gonna have an after decision?
Do you have a decision date, Michael? Yeah, as far as a decision date, I don't, I don't know if any, if this can get done in 10 days.
Oh, this will be done tomorrow.
This will be done tomorrow, that's impressive.
Correct.
It takes extra day.
All right, let's come back tomorrow.
But we also have to get the, we have to wait on the conservation board too, so if it is done by a week from tomorrow, would you, town hall is closed?
Thanksgiving.
Day after Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving, ah, so if we get all the information in by the, by the end of next week, business week, you'll have a decision, Wednesday of next week, you'll have a, you'll have a decision for December fifth, if not, it will be the following meeting, which is December nineteenth.
We'll be ready.
Okay.
Second.
Your motion is for December fifth.
My motion is for December fifth.
Okay, Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice holiday.
Thanks, you too.
Item six on the agenda is Michael, Michael Thaler, fourteen Bayview Drive West in Hampton Bayes, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash two sixty-seven dash two dash thirty-one. I have a request for relief from Town Code three thirty dash eleven, K two G one, accessory apartment special standards to allow the total floor area of an accessory apartment that was constructed within, within, excuse me, constructed within an accessory building.
He's still reading?
Constructed within an accessory building without the benefit of a building permit to be forty-two point nine percent of the total floor area of the principal dwelling or a maximum of thirty-five percent is permitted, any other needs necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Cornelius Kelly, I'm recusing myself in this application.
I don't know why.
So this, it was built without the benefit of, it was converted to an apartment without the benefit of a building permit, but it was built with a permit for a art studio.
Can you just, wait, can you just identify yourself for the record, please?
I'm sorry, Robert Kelly, attorney for the applicant.
In the microphone?
Yeah, you can have the microphone, we're having some troubles with sound tonight. I'll go over, Robert Kelly, attorney for the applicant, so it was built with a permit for a art studio, the building, and two thousand and six was the permit, my client's mother, who lives in the apartment today, has lived there since two thousand and ten, I believe it is, he converted himself by adding some kitchen cabinets and oven, because his mother was ill and she lives on the property with him, he never closed out the old permit for the art studio, so that's how it then came up as a violation for an open permit and the building department realized it was an apartment now, my client didn't realize he needed, he didn't know he didn't have a C O for that old art studio, and then he didn't realize that he needed something to convert, but here we are, it is a R twenty zone, but our lot is forty thousand square feet, our lot coverage is only seven point one percent, so we're not overbuilt here, and that's probably the problem, is the main house is small, which is what drives the percentage higher, it's a four hundred and sixty-nine square foot accessory apartment, as you know, the code allows a minute, it has to be at least four hundred to be an accessory apartment, it can't be more than a thousand, so we're at the low end of that range, it's just that the house is only a thousand and ninety-two square feet, we only have one driveway, the property is well screened all the way around, it is, I think I said it was seven point one percent lot coverage, my client does live in the main house as required, his mother's living in the accessory apartment, you know, it's been there for years, it's had no adverse physical impact on the neighborhood.
The building was constructed with a permit, it's just the kitchen.
The conversion into, yeah, adding the cabinets and the appliances is what happened.
The appliances and the sleeping is what we're discussing, but electric, plumbing, everything else was.
And the furniture, yeah, obviously we added a bed.
Bathroom was there before?
Yes.
I don't know, we'll have to ask, okay.
We don't need any setback relief, we meet all the setbacks, even though we could go to seventy percent of the code, we didn't.
Have you heard from any of the neighbors?
No.
Okay, and I just have to, I want to swear you in, just because I'm going to ask you some questions, you need to state your name and address.
Michael Thaler, fourteen Bayview Drive West, Hampton Days, New York, one one nine four six.
Okay, and do you swear to tell the truth, to hold you to nothing about the truth?
Yes, I do.
So wanted just to ask you about the history of the property and what you're looking to do, and what your attorney indicated has approvals or got approvals versus the approvals that you're asking for us for now.
So I just, when the, when the builder built the pool house slash art studio, I was under the assumption that the C O was issued, and a couple of years, a couple of years later, mom decided to retire and I modified it for her disabilities so she could, so she could move in, and then a couple of years on, I got my first notice, I found out that I didn't have the C O for anything.
So you got me to issue a notice of violation?
Correct, that was probably in two thousand and twelve, I think, my first, my first notice was, so it was well into everything.
So the work, did you do the work yourself or did you have somebody come in?
The building, no.
The improvements?
The improvements myself, it was, it was minor.
Okay.
Electric stove?
Yes.
You did all the plumbing?
The plumbing was already done, there was really no modifications.
Is the shower there?
Yes.
So you put in the shower?
That was done when the art studio was done.
That was done as part of the art studio?
Yes.
So what did the art studio have in it besides the shower?
Shower and a laundry room.
And?
And a bathroom.
So you put in a stove, is that right?
Correct.
An electric stove or a gas stove?
Electric.
You received your first notice of violation in two thousand and twelve, I mean, what took you so long to come in and ask for this?
Well, it was a combination of, you know, the world was in a crazy place, two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, and my mom's health degraded, and I had my own health issues as well over the years, so, which brings us really up to a couple of years ago, when I learned what, all the things that I would need to have to do, and then we got.
We probably spent the last two years chasing the architect to get the plans drawn up to give you the right square footage, and I think I redid them three times this fall, or rather got the architect to redo them three times this fall.
Did the art studio, did the art studio have a bathroom?
Yes.
Did we have to grant any relief, Gus, for the art studio?
No.
Was it prior decisions?
No, just CFO.
What?
Yeah, CFO for the art studio, yoga studio, building permit for that, rather.
We had a building permit, yeah, there was no variance for that, I think years ago there was a variance for a fence because this is a three-sided, you know, there's road on three sides of this lot, Oregon curves is right there, and what's the other issue?
Oregon Road East and Bayview Jack List.
But you're here to try to legalize.
Yes.
So when it comes to asphalt structures, and, you know, I know this is really just putting in the, I guess, the appliances and using it differently, we ask these kinds of questions as to how it transpired, how it happened, but, you know, one thing I want to mention is that the relief for the accessory apartment, you know, generally we grant relief for the percentage, we generally ask for the size of the accessory apartment that's in the code versus what's being proposed, because sometimes people.
You have a modest sized house.
Yeah, circumstances just require, require or necessitate relief, but, you know, we do ask questions about, you know, anything that's, that's built, and we want people to, you know, get permits before, you know, doing things, and so appreciate the fact that you're, that you're here to correct what occurred.
One bedroom?
Yeah.
One bedroom, sir?
Yes.
Yeah, the plans are there.
Yeah, yeah.
See if anyone's there.
Yeah, yeah, any other questions of members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Thaler, this is for fourteen Bayview Drive West in Hampton Bayes? If not, I have a lead on the application, so are we waiting on anything, Candace?
No.
No, okay, all right, so I will move that we close the application this evening for all purposes, and I will have a decision ready at our next meeting, which is December fifth.
Second.
Thank you.
I'm in support of the application, by the way, just so you don't leave here with any questions.
Okay, thanks, have a good night. Mr. Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly, recuse himself.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess, Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Chair of time. Do you want to keep going or take a break?
Keep going.
Yeah, last one, man.
Bruce looks so excited, don't want to hold him up.
Hopefully Bruce isn't going to be long with it as usual. Okay, item eight on the agenda is a modification request, my favorite, on September twenty-one, nineteen ninety-five, fourteen years ago, this board granted permission to maintain one apartment in the upstairs of the main dwelling and is directed to remove the cooking equipment in the east unit within sixty days of the decision, and remove structural and other alterations on the second apartment, by letter, October twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen, Bruce Anderson of Suffolk Environmental Consulting, agent for the owner, has requested that the said decision be amended to allow the aforementioned apartment to be relocated into a proposed accessory building.
Board has jurisdiction.
Okay, state your name and address, please.
Bruce Anderson, Suffolk Environmental Consulting, name of Brickham.
Do you choose to, sir, tell the truth, to hold you to nothing about the truth?
I do, sir.
Okay, can you tell us about this application, okay?
Well, this is not a, this is an application to modify an existing enforced variance.
You're not looking for a second apartment here, right?
No.
Just to be clear for the records, everyone knows.
The zoning decision was rendered in nineteen ninety-five, was issued to the previous owner, Florence Billing, at that time, the, and it's an extensive record, which is in front of it, all the regions behind it, at that time, I'm sorry, at that time, the applicant.
Can you actually slide it maybe a little closer?
Was requesting that they be permitted two apartments upstairs, and through the, through the back and forth that occurred there, it was determined by the board that they really had one application because the, one apartment, because the previous apartment could only be traced back to nineteen sixty-two, so it's a rather lengthy decision that's made part of this record, so in any event, this apartment was granted in nineteen ninety-five, and we're seeking to simply relocate the apartment, which is on the second floor of the house, to an accessory apartment, after the application, after the decision was rendered by this board, the applicant came in and got a C O, which states apartment as per decision of the zoning board, number nine seven oh three nine and nine seven two five, which are also made part of my application, please understand, we're not requesting any other relief, we have an accessory building here that meets all setback requirements, it's not too large in relationship to the existing dwelling, the existing dwelling, the existing second floor apartment, I should say, contains one thousand three hundred and seventeen square feet, we would be building as habitable space in the proposed detached garage, an accessory apartment of one thousand square feet, so the actual size of the apartment decreases by a little over thirty percent, so really, all, the only thing that changes here is that we take a use that's permitted by this board and C O'd by this town from the second story of a house, and we relocate it into an accessory building that complies in all respects to the dimensional requirements in the zone in which it falls, which happens to be in our eighty zone, so this accessory apartment's a hundred feet off the front lot line, we have no side yard problems, we are under the twenty feet overall height, which is the requirement for accessory structures, our coverage is going to be four point nine percent, where ten percent is permitted, we have sighted the house, I mean, the accessory structure beyond two hundred feet from the wetland boundary, so we don't need any approvals from the conservation board, more do we need any approvals, obviously, from the trustees, so it is simply a request to, to relocate this use from the second floor of the house to a detached accessory structure, which is not unusual in this town, not unpermitted in any, in info that I'm aware of, and here to answer the question, may I?
Have you heard from any of the neighbors?
No, I have not.
So the house is going to be converted to a single-family house with no apartments in it whatsoever?
That is correct. That is correct.
Is it subject to the accessory apartment section of the town code?
No, because it actually predates it.
Okay, so that means, so the impact is different, the impact is different, I mean, I know you're saying you're moving it out of the house, but the impact to the neighbors is certainly different from having an apartment in the house to having two, two dwellings on the property.
I don't see how that would, I don't even know how you draw that reasoning.
Because if I rent out, you know, if I live in my house and I, my tenant is going to be different, who, the person who lives in the house as opposed to the tenant who's going to be in a separate structure.
No, no, I should say, our intention is that it will be owner occupied.
The prior variance essentially talks about it being for family members.
It will be owner occupied, but it's not an accessory, you know, it's not, you know, I have a, I have a C O for a use.
Yeah.
Single-family dwelling plus apartment, I'm simply taking that apartment, I'm putting it in an accessory building, which is not prohibited by any statute.
No, I'm not saying it's prohibited, I'm just saying the impact is certainly different.
It's different, it is.
It happens it will be owner occupied if that is a concern of this board.
Which will be owner occupied?
The apartment.
The apartment will be.
But it's not bound by that.
Yes, it's not for rental, you know, outside, we're not putting two unrelated families in here.
We condition it that way. So is there a dimensional aspect to this application?
No.
It's complying, it's reducing the size of the house. So it's a, so it's a use variance, then?
No, it's a modification of an existing variance.
Bruce, I don't see a survey showing where, unless it's just not in my package, where.
I don't see mine either.
Where the new structure is going.
We bought it surveyed by Suarez Holden, that depicts the accessory.
It's, it's in there, it's, it's big.
Apartment.
The survey is big, it's probably folded up in your packet.
I don't know, I'm sure you have it because I know we put it in, but I have.
Do you want me to pass mine down?
Please, yeah, because I just don't have one, maybe I'm missing it constantly.
Yep, no, no, I don't have one on.
Katie, I have a question.
Yep.
In order for something to qualify as an area variance, does it have to have a dimensional aspect?
I, you got to say that again.
In order for something to qualify as an area variance, does it have to have a dimensional aspect?
Yeah, this, this really, like Bruce said, it's not, it's not an area variance, it's a modification of the prior variance, so he doesn't have to pass the five-part test, this is more just, you know, do you think this is a reasonable modification, or do you, you know, do you think that it's, it's got to stay where it is?
Okay, thank you.
Well.
New septic system?
That, that, Katie, I think that is true. I think we, I think in all fairness, we, you know, should look at, you know, a modified, what is a modified proposal, you know, as if it were an area variance, I mean, I just think that, you know, because this is such a significant difference.
Yeah, you can apply those standards, but I'm just saying there is, there is no area, like Cornelius has said, it's not looking, you know, the size, everything is comparable, it's just whether you want to move it out of the house and into the apartment.
You know, I would say, I would say this, that physically, there's the absolutely no prohibition for me to build the building, absolutely no prohibition, because I comply in each and every respect for every part of the zoning code, so.
I'm sorry, but you can't, you can't build the building as an apartment, you can build it as an accessory structure.
You're not hearing me, and what I'm saying, it's a physical accessory structure of this size, of this configuration, of these setbacks can be placed on the lot, okay, without need for variance, and I'm not requesting a variance for the building per se, so now what it becomes is whether or not there's some sort of impact of relocating an apartment from the second floor of an existing house into this accessory building, I think we would all agree, there's no exterior impact, because I could have the building anyway, I think we can all agree there's no parking impact, because I have the parking anyway, I have upgraded a septic system, including a new I A out system, which is depicted on the survey, and I've gone through conservation board for that, so from a physical standpoint, from an environmental standpoint, there's nothing adverse to the neighborhood or district in which this property lies, so the question just becomes, the way the benefit of the applicant against the detriment to the public health, safety, welfare.
That's not true, that's not true.
Of the district of that, in an area variance, so, and I'm saying, there is no impact, because I could have the building anyway.
But Bruce, that's not fair to say, because you can, you can build it as a garage, or you can build it, the impact is the moving, the dwelling part from the house into a separate structure, that's the impact.
What, what is the impact?
How close is it to the property line?
Ninety feet from the front line, we are ninety feet from the front lot line, we are well in excess of all side yard setbacks, we are not, we do not have a clearing issue, we do not have accessory structure versus primary structure in terms of percentage, we are below the twenty-five percent, so physically, there's no variance at all required.
Okay, but the difference between this and what we typically see, an accessory apartment application, this is not, is, this is not an accessory apartment application, this is an application for a, pretty much, an apartment without limitations on it, of accessory apartment law, being relocated from inside of the dwelling to an accessory, to an accessory structure, so.
Well, what I have represented so far is that, and I have, I've gone through the accessory law, it essentially complies, it's designed to comply in any event, so the habitable space is a thousand square feet, which is a limitation, okay, that's why it's a thousand square feet.
Well, that's why I'm asking, you know, I mean, why don't you just make it an accessory apartment, you're asking to move.
Because I already have a variance.
Okay, well, that's, you know, that.
And I have a C O for it, that's why, and because, that's why I was advised to do by the building. due by the buildings department.
He's got a variance for apartment in the house, main dwelling, is that what he?
Yes, that is correct.
Well, if you're gonna go over to the accessory building, then you gotta lose that, that's gotta go.
Oh, I, no question, no, I, 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 no.
Legally, we're not going on, no more accessory apartment, ever, ever.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, that apartment on the second floor will never be an apartment. We're never gonna have more than one apartment on this property. The question is.
Well, we're gonna make sure.
Well, no, I, we're not arguing, we're agreeing with each other, I'm, I'm fine with that.
It's Kay's job.
I'm completely fine with that.
Okay, okay. So, so here's the, the next part of it.
See if anybody's here.
Now, we've been advised to make the application we have made with the town, and that's why it's before you.
So, Bruce, you're, you're saying that it will be essentially living up to the accessory apartment law?
That's correct.
Do you have a problem with a condition being placed in the decision stating that that, that would be the case?
That's, I'm saying that's fine.
So in effect, what Keith said before would, would be, what we would be looking to do, which is essentially giving up the apartment in the house?
That is correct.
In order to have an accessory apartment that you otherwise would be allowed to apply for pursuant to the law?
That is correct.
Okay, um, uh, you, but we're doing it in a different way, we're doing it by amending the decision, uh, to, to allow the, this, what had been an apartment in the house to be moved to the, to the other, uh, to the accessory building with the limitations of the accessory apartment law in it.
Yes, and keep in mind, too, the accessory apartment, the, the apartment that's in the second floor of that house right now.
Has no limitations.
Is thirteen hundred square feet.
Right, right.
I've advised the client, why not make it a thousand square feet, which is a limitation on your accessory, hopefully to make it easier on you guys, because there's something about this apartment. First of all, I have a C.O. for it, and it's larger than what the accessory apartment law today would permit, it's larger. So we're saying, we'll bring that down to a thousand square feet. This is an easier way of applying for something, it's clearer, it, um, I'm not sure whether, I didn't even, it didn't occur to me that, that, ask for an accessory apartment and keep the second apartment, I'm not going there.
Right.
Alls I'm saying is, I wanna take this use, and we'll put it in this accessory structure.
Okay, my next question, if we're going down this road and we're doing this, um, and actually, this is a question for you, but also a question for Katie, um, is there any other relief that you would need, besides what you're asking for?
No.
But I don't, I don't understand, Bruce, you said that, I asked you if you would comply with the accessory apartment, apartment law, and you said no.
I said, what I said was, I was to the building, I, in fact, I'm advised by the buildings department that I could have it at thirteen hundred square feet.
I'm not concerned about the size, I'm concerned about the owner occupancy and, and who it's being rented to.
What I'm, what the client's representing, he and his mother are gonna live here, okay, and that's what it's designed for, and, and, and that's what we're doing. But it's not, you know, we're, we're not applying it as an accessory apartment, because I already have the use, that's the point.
Well, but that's.
If you are so conditioned to say, it shall be.
Yeah, you're gonna be giving up that, that use, that is, as just a flat-out apartment, in exchange for instead getting accessory apartment at a different location, that's what we're looking to do.
That's fine.
Although we haven't heard from, you know, members of the public, there may be people here.
Excuse me?
How many bedrooms is this?
Two.
All right. Any other questions, members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Van Wick? Just have to swear you in, if you can state your name and address.
Fred Vander Werven, thirty-seven Shore Drive, North Sea.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Correct, explain last name for me?
Pardon me?
Do you swear your last name for me?
Uh, yes, uh, Vander Werven, V.A.N.D.E.R.W.E.R., V as in Victor, E.N. Well, credit to my friend Bruce Anderson, um, this is quite, my first reaction to this was, I, I really couldn't believe that you're gonna take an existing, an apartment and move it to a new structure and claim that there's no difference. We are now gonna have a second building on the lot. Um, just a, a question for Bruce.
You have to ask us.
You have to, you have to talk to us.
Yes. A question for the board, the existing apartment that was granted a variance, has that been occupied, or has that been abandoned?
Can't abandon it.
Can't abandon it.
It's, it's runs with the land.
Runs with the land.
Yes.
But they're, but they're going to be abandoning it based on, on the, the dialogue that you, that you just, just heard.
Okay, another question that, um, I would have is, is the premises owner occupied?
He said they're gonna, they would agree to a condition of that.
That the owner will be occupying that premise, as his, as his, as a primary residence?
It'll, it'll be.
Assuming it's town law.
Whatever the accessory apartment law requires.
He'd have to comply.
They'd have to comply with, which, which means that either the primary structure or the accessory apartment must be owner occupied, one or the other.
One or the other by the owner.
By the owner, yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Um, in reading through the building permit approval, um, the first thing was the owner occupied, um, question that I had, and whether the apartment, but I understand that that's no longer, no longer matters. Um, no more than one accessory apartment shall be permitted on the lot. If you look at the, uh, if you, if you look at the design, uh, that's been submitted, there's two bathrooms, two bedrooms, does that cause any concern to anyone?
It conforms to the code.
Hmm?
That conforms to the code.
An accessory apartment is allowed to be two bedrooms.
So you're gonna allow the applicant to give up the one in the, in the residence and build a new, a new structure to, taking a one, one, one bedroom, one bath unit, and convert it into two bedrooms, two baths?
We haven't gotten there, but that's what we're being asked to do.
We haven't made our decision, but that's what we're being, that's what's being requested.
Okay, uh, some other things of note, um, only one access driveway permitted, okay, he has a circular driveway that he's indicated, um, the entrances, uh, looking at the, the drawings, it says, um, referring to section L of the code here, of a second, or new entrance to the accessory apartment is constructed, ground floor, outside entrances to the accessory apartment shall be from the side or rear yard. Uh, I think there's actually two entrances on the front, actually, if you count up all the doors, there's like seven entrances to this property. Um, I call attention, no seasonal occupancy is to be permitted, so that someone will be, a lease is required for at least one year, is that correct?
If, if it's being rented.
If it's gonna be rented.
Under the accessory apartment law. If there are two, if there, the owner is living there with his family, it's different.
All right, can this become a Airbnb, for example?
No, that's precluded in the law.
It is precluded, very good.
Short-term rentals are precluded in the town of Southampton.
Oh, okay.
It's beneficial to the town to bring this under the purview of the accessory apartment law, I mean, that's, that's kind of where, where the conversation was headed, because right now, there's no restriction on who can, you know, they could rent out the house and the apartment to anyone, there's no restrictions on it.
Understand, understand, um, okay.
And, and they're perfectly entitled to leave everything just the way it is, so they're coming to, to.
And I think everyone would be fine with that, I don't think anyone would have any, any issues with that. What the concern, um, concern is that this may become somewhat of a commercial property, and a second, a second structure, you, all of a sudden, we've morphed this into another house.
Okay.
A two-family house.
So, so the accessory apartment law is designed to encourage affordable housing in the town of Southampton, okay, it has limitations in it.
Right.
It has an application process, a, uh, a process where the building department comes and inspects the property.
Mm-hmm.
There are all kinds of benefits of it, but it's primarily a tool for people to be able to afford to live in the town who are having difficulty doing so, okay?
No, no problem with that, we're very sympathetic to that.
Yeah.
The only concern is that we, we're, we're not sure that that's what this is about.
So we're not allowed to speculate?
I understand.
We have to take the application on its face, and if there's an enforcement issue, you'd have to call on that.
I'm just expressing the concerns.
Understand.
Thank you.
Okay, any comments?
Anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak?
Just need to swear you in, if you can state your name and address.
My name is James Williams, number one hundred, Big Fresh Pond Road.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I certainly do.
Okay.
Thank you very much, thank you very much for your time this evening.
No problem.
If you look at the survey, you can see on the southeast corner, where the circular driveway comes onto Big Fresh Road, that entered, that comes in between two drains, this area floods every time it rains. If you look to, on, on the survey, from the right-hand side, there's a lot of, a, a big pitch that comes down that way, also from the left, and also from Randall Road, which isn't marked on this. All the, you know, any kind of runoff ends up right there, hence the two drains. This driveway is sighted directly between the two, also behind the telephone pole, it's an incredibly limited sightline, coming and going. I live across the street, we have a hard time getting in and out of our driveway on a regular traffic day. So sighting this driveway here seems to be, it would be pretty detrimental, actually, it's gonna increase the flooding, even though it's a permeable surface, they're gonna have to raise grade to put the driveway in, so it's just gonna make the flooding worse here.
So you'd like to have the driveway relocated?
I would like to have them keep the original driveway, period, and not disturb and clear all the extra land that that circular driveway, you know, would cause.
Okay.
That's my point, and I also have a letter from a neighbor across the street, wasn't able to make it tonight, he would like to submit written comment, but he would like to.
Yep, you give that to our attorney.
Thank you very much.
Okay, have to swear you in, if you can state your name and address.
Grant Greenberg, one one five Big Fresh Pond Road.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Greenberg, G.R.E.E.N.B.E.R.G.
One oh five.
One one five Big Fresh Pond Road. So my property is adjacent to Mr. Van Wick's property, um, I purchased the house a little over a year ago, but I've been living in North Sea since two thousand and five. I like the property owner very much, he's been kind and pleasant neighbor, but unfortunately, I cannot support this request to amend the nineteen ninety-five decision, um, based on the plans currently proposed. Earlier this year, Mr. Van Wick installed a new nitrogen-free septic system on his property, which is admirable, but in doing so, he cleared a large, large section of the property of old growth trees for the leaching field. Now he proposes to clear another large section for the accessory building, parking spaces and a circular driveway. This will leave the majority of his property cleared, cutting a swath, a swath through the woods. During the warmer months, I jog around Big Fresh Pond, many of my neighbors and residents of North Sea also walk along Big Fresh Pond Road. The, the road has pleasant winding turns, great views of the pond and surrounding woods, and it's usually not that busy. It's a wonderful road for walking in every season. None of the houses have circular driveways, and the majority are screened from the road by native woods. Mr. Van Wick's proposed development will forever change the character of Big Fresh Pond Road. It's also not clear what the precise use of the accessory structure will be. Uh, Mr. Van Wick currently does not live full-time in the house, um, he operates an events business, which is respa, and is responsible for some of the Hamptons' most impressive parties and events. These require event staff, floral design, custom decor, decor, and furniture. This past summer, two trucks were parked at his property, with their refrigeration units running overnight, causing a disturbance in the neighborhood. I'm here tonight to try to get some assurance that the real purpose of this new structure is not to provide overflow support for his event, his events business. I would happily support him expanding his current residence and using it as a two-family as it is currently zoned. I'd even be open to him, even be open to supporting him building an accessory structure, so long as it is remain, so long as it is, as it is sighted in the current cleared portion of the property. I'd also like to point out that the previous owner of the property, uh, was Kurt Billings, who's been mentioned already, and he died tragically in two thousand and nine. Mr. Billings was a beloved member of the Southampton community and also its swimming coach. Hundreds, if not thousands, of, uh, children, Southampton children, learned to swim under his guidance at his property at Big Fresh Pond. He was also a passionate environmentalist. At twenty-four years old, he took out a twenty-five thousand dollar personal loan to help preserve one, a one-acre parcel on Big Fresh Pond, that he also brought to the attention of the Pecanic Land Trust. Later, Mr. Billings became a member of the Pecanic Land Trust Land Stewardship Committee and fought to preserve the Tuckahoe Woods in North Sea. He was, he is a big part of the reason why the Tuckahoe Woods exist. Knowing Kurt dedicated much of his time and spare money to preserve the woods in the area, I don't think he would approve of this project, and would be disturbed if he knew that a ruling that he was granted in nineteen ninety-five to convert his property into a two-family was now being used to justify the clearing of the majority of this property. Our community has only been recently made aware of these plans, and many of our neighbors are still evaluating this proposal, that's why we're here tonight, and I hope you'll agree to keep the record open after this hearing for written submissions.
Thank you for comments, I just wanna mention one thing, when people put in, uh, you know, septic systems, including nitrogen septic systems, it's not optional that some of the trees are gonna go. It's unfortunately, you know, a part, part of that, that aspect of construction, so I'm hoping, maybe the, we can talk to the agent, the applicant, about what's gonna be done to replant.
Yeah, he is talking about replanting them, I've actually spoken to him, and I've spoken to his architect, and, um, you know, that's certainly, uh, great, but, uh, the placement of the, the structure that he's proposing now, I still think is a, is a, is an overall, will create an overall loss to the character of the neighborhood. It's a hundred, a hun, seventy feet that will run parallel to Big Fresh Pond Road, so when you're walking down Big Fresh Pond Road, you'll essentially be, right now, you walk down there, and you're just seeing woods, and there, and if you look on Google Maps, you'll see it's just kind of wall-to-wall woods, and suddenly, we'll be looking at a seventy-foot, nineteen-foot-tall structure, uh, along that stretch, and it's, it's a big change.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Um, oh, sure, just one more question.
No, I was gonna, I was just gonna ask Bruce.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Um, I was looking, you said that the, that the owner was going to live in the south?
That's what he's represented, yes.
Pardon me?
Yes.
So, doesn't he have the other house, too, then?
Yes.
So why is he living, he's gonna live in two houses?
Well, he says that he will utilize, uh, the main house or the accessory apartment for family use, that's his representation, which he's allowed to do.
So?
So we're not here to argue, you know, can he live in one house, he can live in one house.
The building, you say, he, he's gonna live?
Yes.
The building, the.
The difference here, if it processes it's the board, so conditions it to be used as accessory apartment, as that term is defined in this, as that use is defined in the code, has to be owner occupied, at least one of the units, that's how it works. And I have represented that, we will comply with that, and, because that's what the client has told me. As for the clearing, and some of the things I've heard, we're not in aquifer protection overlay district, so there are no clearing restrictions, and as I previously testified, we've been careful to locate this even outside the jurisdiction of the conservation board, in other words, more than two hundred feet from the wetland boundary. And so, uh, in fact, we, we located the septic system, the, the alternative septic system, more than two hundred feet from the wetland boundary. So we're moving in that direction for environmental reasons.
Well, I, I, I am, um, I think I differ a little bit when you say, why does it matter where the owner lives, he can live in the big house, I don't know how.
That's correct.
Oh, he can live in, well, I mean, we usually have some standards of who, what the apartment's for, and who's gonna live in the apartment, and.
Well, as I said, these are gonna be occupied, it's gonna be owner occupied, which is what the code provides, I don't know what more to give you, you need a list of your family members, is that what you're asking me for?
At least while I'm here, I don't remember any cases where somebody had a house, and then asked for an apartment, so they could have the house and the apartment.
Well, the reason is.
Pardon me?
The reason is, because we already have an apartment.
Yeah.
That's why we've applied the way we've applied.
But he's acquired, that thirteen hundred, he said it was thirteen?
Right.
So that apartment is no longer gonna be an apartment.
That is correct.
So his house, in fact, is gonna get larger.
That is correct.
So he will have even that much more space to call his own.
That is correct.
So that would make it even less necessary for him to have the need, need to have an accessory apartment, and that's the piece I can't quite get. And that's the piece I can't quite get.
Well, we don't generally, um, I don't think it's the role of this board, my role or anyone else's role in this room, to make decisions based on what we think someone's needs are.
Well, we do have rules as to who can, who should be occupying the accessory apartment.
I understand, and, and the applicant has agreed that they will have this proposed accessory apartment comply with the current accessory apartment law, all provisions of it. So that, that's what, what the applicant has, has agreed to.
Well, it won't be, it won't be all provisions, I mean, it's not, he's talking about the owner occupancy, it's not, doesn't necessarily comply with all of this, the setback ones.
Yeah, setbacks might be a little bit different. Um, the two bedrooms, we're gonna talk about some more, but, but the overall limitations in the accessory apartment law, they're agreeing to have those, um, enforced on, on this apartment, proposed apartment.
I could be totally wrong, but if that's the applicant's intention, wouldn't they bring it and advertise it differently?
Well, this, that's...
Like, that's my issue.
Sure, sure.
There's no limitations on...
Well, here's, here's the thing, okay? If this were, right now, just a, a, a large, but, but a single-family residence, they could make an application for an accessory apartment, and, and propose it in a detached building, okay? They might have to live up to some of the differences between what's on the current property, uh, you know, setback-wise, and, and, and the percentages versus what would be an accessory apartment. So that will be the normal way we will be talking about an accessory apartment. This application is different because the applicant currently has a, an, not an accessory apartment, but a separate apartment, a separate living space within the residence that predates the accessory apartment law, okay? That already, that currently exists, and they want to give up that second use in the house, in exchange for us basically having a similar use in the accessory apartment that does comply with the, for the most part, with the accessory apartment law. Whereas right now, there are no limitations, they can, they can have that apartment rented to anybody. They can have the apartment and the house, and it, that is, the rest of the house rented without any limitations of any kind, uh, that are in the accessory apartment law. This, this would put them within a confines of the accessory apartment law, but they're giving up something, they're giving up that second use in the house.
Except that, for me, I guess because I'm used to somebody making a, a separate application for an apartment, where they tell us the size of the apartment, was it an occupied apartment?
Correct.
As opposed to a, a global statement that just says, "We will comply with all the rules."
Right, right, and, and...
I mean, and, and it doesn't feel quite as comfortable.
Sure, sure. No, and, and your, and the questions you're asking are good questions, because we need to know that it's gonna be owner occupied, what, amongst the, the neighbors, we had an indication that it, that the neighbor, that the, that the owner isn't there all the time.
Let's not lose the concept that this is a modification request.
Correct, correct.
It seems to be more than a modification.
It's, it's actually, it's less, 'cause the apartment's smaller. What we're asking for is smaller than what we have. We already have two bedrooms, two baths.
I, I think this...
And we're going to two bedrooms, two baths, albeit in a smaller space.
This is where I'm at.
It doesn't become less because it is a separate structure.
Right now, they have an apartment that's unregulated by the town of Southampton. They're willing to reduce the size of it and subject themselves to regulation by the town of Southampton, which includes all of the provisions of an accessory apartment. So for those reasons, I'm in favor of the application, and I think we should move forward.
The only aspect of the application that I do think dismerges a little bit of discussion, I know we've been discussing this a fair amount already, is the two bedrooms. Is it being two bedrooms as opposed to one bedroom? Um, that, that is, you know, often we grant accessory apartments that are one, one bedrooms.
Accessory apartments.
Okay.
Brian, what you said, are, would those be conditions in the decision?
Yes, that's what the applicant agreed to, so.
Thank you.
Yep, and, and the code provides that we are allowed a thousand, their applicants are allowed 1,000 feet and two bedrooms, so I don't see why further restriction would be necessary when they're already subjecting themselves to more restriction.
I have no problem with that. They gotta get rid of, they're done with the house portion.
Yes, that's gonna be in, in the decisions.
Yeah, we're gonna renovate the house, but we're going to not have an apartment on the second floor, that's the point.
Correct, correct.
What about the driveway? And can you address the concerns of the neighbor for the driveway?
The driveway and the parking, the parking can't be in the front yard.
Correct.
It's not a front yard, it's a rear yard, it's a waterfront property. Now, what I will say, and all we could do is go back to the, the client and ask them, I mean, that's fair, I'd always do that anyway. But I'm not here to represent it one way or the other, but I'm, I'm certainly willing to, to do that, and I can be persuasive.
I'd like to see if you could do something with the driveway to alleviate the neighbor's concern with flooding, if that's the situation down there.
We could certainly put drainage in there, if you, you know, we'll figure a way out of that, we'll figure...
If we could work something out with that and then the parking area, if there's anything to do with that.
Yep.
Well, Brian, how are you dealing with the issue of the neighbors and their concerns?
Okay.
I just asked him to readdress the driveway and the parking in the area?
I'm sad enough to make the neighbors happy.
Well, we, we don't know, we, we, hold, hold, hold on, we can't, we can't have, okay, but I think what we're probably gonna do is have, have you come back, um, if, because I would want to have this information confirmed as to what's actually gonna be there.
What do you mean what's gonna be there?
We're talking about the two driveways, are we gonna be changing that?
I don't know whether we're gonna be changing that. But what I said was that I would relay that concern to the, to the property owner. I also said that in any event, we'd be more than happy to put in what other drainage is sufficient, so that we're not contributing to a flooding problem.
I think any also was the location of the second...
You have to take care of your place.
That's correct.
I hear you.
That's correct.
Right, so I, I would, just like Terrence said, I would like confirmation on everything that's hopefully happened.
I believe there's a right to maintain the two curb cuts, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, you know, we try to get people, you know, property owners and neighbors to get, to get, get, uh, you know, communicate and, and work things out when there are concerns. We have people that took time out of their schedule in order to be, be here, um, and I want to make sure that, that we all know, uh, what, what the end result of this is gonna be. So I think if we closed it for, closed the hearing tonight and didn't keep it open, I don't know that we'd have an opportunity to make sure that we know exactly what, what ultimately is gonna happen on this property.
I agree with that.
So bring him back, that's all, bring him back.
Yep.
I'm sure Bruce isn't happy about that, but he did.
And if you, if you wish to have more neighbors that wish to come and speak?
Yep, yep. All right, um...
Whose case is this?
This, this, this is Michael's. Well, but before we do that, is there any, I think we've got comments from most everybody, if you wanna speak, again, just you need to go up to the microphone, and if you can be brief.
Identify yourself, sir.
Yep, my name's James Williams, 100 Big Fresh Pond Road.
Yep.
There would be more neighbors here, except the sign that notified us of this meeting tonight is probably 25 feet back on the driveway, only visible when you come from the west. We have people that weren't even aware that this was happening tonight.
Okay.
I'm here because the folks were kind enough to provide us with a packet.
Well, you can tell them to come.
We're gonna hold this open for all purposes.
Alright, great.
And before, you'll, you'll hear the date.
Great, thank you very much.
Yep. Katie, you gonna say something?
No, I just was gonna say he could tell them the next hearing date.
Absolutely, feel free, feel free.
Michael, you got a motion, Michael?
When, when is the next hearing date that we have available for...
First one in January.
Yeah, I'd rather do it...
December?
I don't, I don't care when, when you gotta do it. According to availability, Bob.
Candace?
It was first meeting, January, January 2nd.
Happy New Year, you going away for New Year's, going to Calhoun or something?
I hope so.
I hope so, too.
So we'll keep this, uh, we'll keep this, um, application open with a, another appearance for January 2nd?
2020?
2020, um, where the applicant or his representative may come back and address the issues that were brought up this evening.
Or not? Good. And you're all welcome to be here on that date as well, and feel free to let, let your, your neighbors know, okay?
Second by Mr. Kelly?
Okay, uh, Mr. Daly?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Sessa?
Aye.
Mr. Tithill?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Hahn?
Aye.
Chair of the time, thank you all for being here. You taking a break? Okay, we're taking a break. We're back on.
I have a determination in the matter of 277 Surfside, it's an amended decision. On September 1 of 2016, this board, by decision D016125, granted relief from the various provisions of the town code to allow a proposed cabana that would, uh, include an outdoor kitchen and bathroom enclosure to be located within the required minimum and total side yard of the principal building. Setback relief to allow a portion of the proposed patio that falls between the principal structure and the proposed canopy, and three to allow a three-story dwelling where the height is limited to two stories. By letter dated October 3 of 2019, John Bennett of Bennett and Reed, attorney for the applicant, requested that the decision be modified to address a, uh, as-built condition with respect to the portion of the patio that falls between the principal structure and that of the proposed canopy. Modification request was advertised in the paper, posted and mailed, and Bailey Larkin of Bennett and Reed appeared and explained to the board that after construction was completed, it was discovered that there was, uh, slightly inconsistencies with the variances granted. Ms. Larkin also submitted a cost estimate from Charles Galanti Inc. dated October 15 of 2019, indicating it would cost $454,000 to do that. While this board does not condone construction completed that does not comply with the variances granted, it nevertheless finds, as it did before, that the changes to setbacks are negligible and pass the standards set forth in town code and New York State law. Therefore, ZBA decision D016125 dated September 1 of 2016 is amended to grant relief for the town code section 3304624B for an accessory side yard setback of 10.1 feet, where 10.3 feet was granted, town code section 33046.24A for a total side yard of 34.8, where 31 feet was granted, and for a total side yard setback of 47.2 feet, where 47.7 feet is granted. This relief is for the structures as shown on the survey of squires Holden, Weissenbach, and Smith, surveyed August 30th of 2007, last revised August 16th of 2019. All other provisions and conditions of decision D016125 dated September 1, 2016 remain in full force and effect.
Second.
Mr. Sessa?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Daly?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Hahn?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
No.
Mr. Tithill?
Aye.
Chair of the time.
I know of the determination in the matter of 80 Wellbone Landing for the matter of Scott Jacobs and Sarah Jacobs. It's an amended decision, um, I'll paraphrase it. Uh, by letter dated August 4 of 2019, Daphne Vaughn of Surfside Environmental Planning, agent for the applicant, requested the decision be amended to reflect new plans. Ms. Vaughn testified that dwelling has been relocated, which will result in a principal total side yard setback of 31.8 feet, where 24.17 feet was granted, and a pyramid encroachment in the amount of 113.69 cubic feet, where 654 cubic feet was previously granted. The modify, it's a modification to provide less setback. Ms. Vaughn maintained that the proposed seven-foot setback for the patio would not have any impact, uh, as evidenced by the neighbor, however, um... We had her amend that to reduce the amount of relief, uh, from that .7. The homeowners association was made aware of this, and the neighbor was made aware and had no objections. Those letters were dated September 16 of 2019. As the proposal is consistent with the various, uh, previously granted variances, and the setback for the proposed patio has been increased from .7 to 4.1 feet. This board finds it appropriate to amend ZBA decision D017158 dated November 16 of 2018 to relieve, to grant relief from town code section 33011 for an accessory side yard setback of 4.1 feet, where 20 feet is required, town code section 33076D and 33083C to allow the proposed patio to be located within the required minimum and total side yard for the principal building, town code section 33084D pyramid height for a 113.69 cubic foot pyramid encroachment, where 654.87 cubic feet was previously granted, town code section 330115D1 continuance for principal total side yard setback of 31.8 feet, where 24.17 feet was previously granted for a proposed dwelling with a second-floor cantilever, town code section 33083D for a proposed stairway to project more than four feet into the yard. These variances are granted for the structure shown on a survey prepared by David El Saskis, surveyor dated May 17 of 2016, last revised November 8 of 2019, and the pyramid sketch prepared by Carol Crueth, architect, dated July 31 of 2019, last revised September 16 of 2019, and the floor plans prepared by the same as dated July 31 of 2019, with the condition that the applicant and all other subsequent owners of the premises maintain the existing hedge along the eastern property line of the premises to a height of a minimum of 10 feet, aligned with Leland Cypress trees between 10 to 12 feet along the western line. All other provisions and conditions of decision D017158 dated November 16 of 2018 remain in full force and effect.
Second.
Ms. Sessa?
Aye.
Mr. Hahn?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Tithill?
Aye.
Mr. Daly?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Chair of the time.
I have a decision of minor variance in the matter of the application of 584 Paul Delaney in British Abbot. Advocate requesting, from town code section 330-11, residential district table of dimension regulations, for a principal front yard setback of 60 feet, where 80 feet is required for a proposed two-story dwelling. Advocate proposes to construct a new single-family dwelling with a finite large setback of 60 feet, where 80 feet is required. Advocate maintains that the premises is surrounded by heavy immature landscape, which was green as dwelling from the street and would thus not have any impact on labor. Advocate asserts that the proposed layout will help provide warm space for the property and its children, and that the reduced setback is consistent with other two-story dwellings in the neighborhood. It passes the five-part test. Therefore, and for the reasons that are forthere, this board threatens to, from town code section 330-11, residential district table of dimension regulations for a principal front yard setback of 60 feet, where 80 feet is required for a proposed two-story dwelling, as shown on the survey of the town, and the survey dated January 10, 2017, last updated October 8, 2019, and the plans and elevation prepared by architect Zachary Todd Conohian, submitted with the application dated September 3, 2019, granted beforegoing reasons such as to such other conditions, and permits, as applicants have been ready for it, and may otherwise have to support the final approval of the subject.
Second. Ms. Burgess? Uh, Ms. Sessa?
Aye.
Mr. Tithill?
Aye.
Mr. Hahn?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Daly?
Aye.
Chair of the time.
I have a determination in the matter of the application of Henry and Loretta Viglianti as trustees under the Viglianti Living Trust. This is a property located at 19 Sandpiper Court in West Hampton, tax number 90382156. Uh, the applicant, uh, applicants request relief, uh, including pyramid relief of 172.35 cubic feet of pyramid relief, um, and relief for a proposed from 33011 for a proposed third-story addition to an existing residence where a maximum of two stories is permitted, all for a proposed third-story addition to an existing residence and any other relief necessary. The property, I indicated the address and tax number, it is in the FEMA flood zone AE7. Uh, the property consists of a two-story residence with detached garage, new ground pool, and masonry patio, decking, a detached shed, bulkhead with floating deck, and both chain lake fencing and PVC fencing. Uh, we have sales for the structures on the property, and we have, uh, a letter initially from the Conservation Board, and then we had a follow-up, uh, letter from an environmental analyst with the Town Department of Land Management stating that the proposed activities, um, would occur greater than 50 feet, land would have surface waters and generally particular to at least 100 linear feet of folks from shoreline bulkhead, type two pursuant to secret. At the public hearing testimony by Kathleen McKenry, agent for the applicants, was that they're seeking approval to build a third story onto their existing two-story residence on a parcel that is located in the FEMA flood zone AE seven. They're seeking variance relief to allow the third, the three-story residence, and for a small amount of pyramid relief related to the three-story residence. They indicated this relief will be in the character of the neighborhood, and that they will agree to conditions that a detached shed of the premises will be either removed or moved to a conforming location, and that the ground floor of the residence will not be used for habitable living space and will only be used for garage mechanical storage. She submitted photographic evidence to establish the character of the community. There was no opposition. It passes the five-part test. Therefore, uh, this board grants applicant relief from zoning code, uh, three thirty eighty-four D pyramid relief for a total encroachment of one seventy-two point thirty-five cubic feet of pyramid relief, and, uh, relief from three thirty eleven for a proposed third-story addition to an existing residence where a maximum of two stories is permitted, all for a proposed third-story addition. Uh, it's, the relief is conditioned on the detached shed being removed or moved to a conforming location, and the ground floor shall, ground floor shall not be used as habitable living space and shall be limited to garage mechanical storage only. The proposed three-story residence will have the dimensional requirements and location as shown on the survey of Duran Tay, surveyor, uh, surveyed December twenty-second, twenty fifteen, last revised November sixth, twenty eighteen, and the pyramid sketching plans of Joseph Gratzler, architect, dated May twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen, which were submitted with the application and incorporated herein, and any other the applicant, relief the applicant requires, applicants require for final approval of the proposed third-story addition to an existing two-story residence to be built at the subject property.
Second.
Mrs. Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Um, Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I have a decision in the matter of the application of Jasper Rose Riley, ninety-seven Sandpiper Lane, Richhampton, New York. Advocate requests relief from town code section three thirty dash seventy-six D placement of accessory building structures in use of the district, and town code section three thirty dash eighty-three C yard to allow the existing four-story residence to be located within the required total side yard for the principal building as a result of a proposed first and second floor addition to an existing dwelling. The subject premises is located at ninety-seven Sandpiper Lane, Richhampton, County of Suffolk and State of New York. Board finds the subject application to be a type two secret. At the public hearing on this matter, agent for the applicant, Mary Rose Riley, appeared on behalf of the applicant and testified that the applicant is proposing additions to the dwelling slash garage that conform with the town code but will result in placing existing swimming pool in deck, both of which benefit from a certificate of compliance in a non-conforming location as they relate to the required total side yard. Ms. Riley maintained that there is no other location for the addition, and that the variance will not result in any impact of the character of the neighborhood since the structure exists, has certificates, and are conforming but for the proposed addition. Further, Ms. Riley testified that the proposed addition while conforming is also consistent with the size and scale of the neighborhood. There was no opposition to the applicant. It passes the five-part test. Therefore, and for the reasons set forth herein, this board grants relief from town code section three thirty dash seventy-six B placement of accessory building structures in use of the district, and town code section three thirty dash eighty-three yards to allow the existing swimming pool in deck to be located within the required total side yard for the principal building as a result of a proposed first and second floor addition to an existing dwelling for structures shown on the survey prepared by David L. Saskis, land surveyor, surveyed by Sep- Sept- surveyed September twenty-ninth, two thousand and eleven, last revised August fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and the prep- plan prepared by Ionon Renaissance Associates dated September fifth, two thousand and fourteen, last revised August twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, to grant the foregoing release subject to such other conditions and permits as applicants have already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second. Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Uh, Mrs. Sessa.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I have a determination in the matter of Echo Development, fourteen Woodfield Road, North Sea, New York. Looking for single and separate determination as well as, uh, front yard setback relief of forty-one feet where forty-five point fi- four feet exists, all proposed two-story dwelling with attached garage. You may recall this property received a single and separate determination on July eighteenth, decision D zero one nine zero eight nine, and then nine days later recorded the deed, again conveying the properties jointly. The facts remain unchanged. It's separate addresses, separate tax bills, uh, now the lot has been used in conjunction with each other. In addition to the single and separate determination, applicant's looking for a front yard setback relief so that proposed house can be moved slightly forward on the property, which would create room in the rear yard for a pool. Mr. Gil Martin, agent for the applicant, testified that several homes in the neighborhood have similar setbacks as the one requested here and provided evidence of same. It meets the five-part test. Therefore, this board finds the subject premises located at fourteen Woodfield Road, North Sea, Town of Southampton, County of Suffolk, and State of New York, tax map nine hundred ninety-nine three, lot eight, is a seventeen thousand four hundred and forty-five square foot, non-conforming lot, held in single and separate ownership and thus, and is thus entitled to relief pursuant to town code three thirty dash one fifteen D. This board also grants relief from town code three thirty dash one fifteen C, continuance for a principal front yard setback of forty-one feet where forty-five point four feet exists, all for proposed two-story dwelling with attached garage as shown on the survey made by squires Holden, Weisenbach, and Smith last dated July thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, as well as site plan and fo- floor plans by Brian Glasser, architect, dated June first, two thousand and nineteen, last revised November seventh, two thousand and nineteen, which show the proposed improvements. The granting of this relief is subject to the conditions of such other permits as the applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the structures on the subject premises.
Second. Um, Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mrs. Sessa.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I have a determination in the matter of Echo Developments, four, eighteen Woodfield Road. This is for the adjacent property. It's single and separate for the same reasons, same prior decision, and they're also seeking uh, sing- uh, relief for a front yard setback to forty feet where eighty feet is required, all for proposed two-story dwelling with attached garage. It again meets the five-part test. Therefore, this board finds that the subject premises located at eighteen Woodfield Road, North Sea, Town of Southampton, County of Suffolk, and State of New York, tax map nine hundred ninety-nine three, lot seven, is a seventeen thousand four hundred and forty-five square foot, non-conforming lot, held in single and separate ownership, and is thus entitled to relief pursuant to town code three thirty dash one fifteen D. This board also grants relief from town code three thirty dash one eleven residential districts table of dimensional regulations for a principal side yard, front yard setback of forty feet where eighty feet is required, all for a proposed two-story dwelling with attached garage as shown on survey made by squires Holden, Weisenbach, and Smith last dated July thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, as well as site plan and floor plans by Brian Glasser, architect, dated June first, two thousand and nineteen, last revised November first, two thousand and nineteen, which show the proposed improvements. The granting of this relief is subject to the conditions of such other permits as the applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the structures of, on the subject premises.
Second. Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mrs. Sessa.
Aye.
Um, Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I have a determination in the matter of Willow Square, seven Sabonic Road, Akho, New York, Suffolk County, tax map number nine hundred one twenty-nine two thirty-eight point two. This says two, uh, uh, sorry, twenty, thirty-eight point, uh, twenty-eight? Is that what that says came out?
The agenda is thirty-eight point two. I don't know what the text.
Thirty-eight point two with a little...
Whatever, we'll just fix it.
Doohickey down there. Okay.
Apologize.
Thirty-eight point two. Um, applicant requests relief from town code three thirty dash eighty-three G one A yards for a transitional side yard setback of thirty feet where fifty feet is required for a proposed stor- storage garage. Applicant also requests a determination as to whether the proposed storage garage is a subordinate or incidental building pursuant to town code three thirty dash five definitions because of its size and proportion to the main dwelling and cottages and its use. At the public hearings on this matter, Robert Gill, architect, Sean Leonard, and Katie Cooper of Land Planning Services testified on behalf of the applicant that he would like to construct a five-thousand-square-foot garage, storage garage, as an accessory to the thirteen cottages and dwellings, uh, and dwelling on the premises, and requires an interpretation and setback relief as it relates to the structure. Ms. Cooper, uh, testified that the premises benefits from a pre-existing use for nine cottages with four cottages added later on that are rented out by many local residents. Uh, Ms. Gill, uh, Mr. Gill explained that there's no storage room in the cottages as they're small as are the closets, and testified that they would like to build the storage garage that would be exclusively be devoted to the storage of, one, equipment used to maintain the premises, uh, in other words, tractors, snowplows, et cetera; two, personal belongings of the tenants of the cottages, such as bicycles, surfboards, storage crates; and three, the applicant and his family's cars. The applicant also submitted a letter dated October third, two thousand and nineteen from Mr. Leonard summarizing that the building area for the thirteen cottages and one-story frame dwelling total is ten thousand two hundred and eighty-five square feet, and that the area of the proposed storage building is five thousand square feet, making the storage building forty-eight point six percent of the size of the total area of residential structures. Further, in response to testimony from neighbor Alan Gonzalez and comments received at the public hearings, the applicant reduced the height of the garage from twenty-five to twenty-four feet and agreed to a landscaping plan to help lessen any impact of the structure. This board is in receipt of a referral report adopted by the planning board on August twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, that states that the structure is, um, too large and should be reduced to increase the setbacks to the neighbors, restrictions on the use should be covenanted, and floor plan should be submitted. This board is also in receipt of an email dated October fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, from Susan Giordano and Anthony Gonzalez, stating that they have no objections to this project. This board finds that the proposed storage garage is a customary accessory structure despite the fact that the square footage of the structure in comparison to the size of the dwelling has triggered review by this board or remains smaller in size than the main dwelling and cottages, and its intended use is clearly incidental and subordinate. Here, testimony was presented that the proposed structure's use is for storage for both the dwellings and the cottages with no habitable living space. This board has routinely found that this type of use is subordinate and incidental to dwellings, notwithstanding the size. Further, while the size of this proposed storage building is larger than those previously considered by this board, the premises here is unique in that, one, it is located on a highway business zoning district; two, boasts two hundred and eleven thousand forty-eight square feet; and three, benefits from certificates of occupancy for thirteen pre-existing cottages and a dwelling. Thus, a five-thousand-square-foot accessory building as it relates to the total square footage of the residential uses, uh, which is ten thousand two hundred and eighty-five square feet, equals forty-eight point six percent, which this board regularly considers incidental and subordinate. This board also finds, under this set of facts and circumstances, that the proposed storage garage with a covenant that its use remain connected to the dwellings and cottages is a subordinate or incidental building pursuant to Southampton town code three thirty dash five definitions. Therefore, this board finds that this passes the five-part test, uh, for setbacks, and for the reasons set forth, uh, uh, this board finds that the proposed five-thousand-storage garage is a subordinate and incidental building pursuant to town code three thirty dash five. Uh, this board also grants relief from the town code three thirty eighty-three G one A yard for a transitional side yard setback of thirty feet where fifty feet is required for a proposed storage garage, as shown on the site plan and plans prepared by Sean F. Leonard, architect, prepared May seventh, two thousand and nineteen, last revised May thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, and September twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, respectively. Granting of this relief and the board's determination is conditioned upon, one, the proposed storage garage being landscaped and maintained by the owner of the premises and all subsequent owners, as shown on the site plan prepared by Timothy Rumpf of Arasis Design, dated October third, two thousand and nineteen; two, the filing of a covenant on the premises subject to form, subject to form approved by the town attorney's office stating that the only storage garage, uh, stating that the storage garage will remain configured as shown on the plans provided by Sean F. Leonard, architect, prepared May seventh, two thousand and nineteen, last revised September twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, and exclusively used for the storage of equipment used to maintain the premises, personal belongings of the tenants of, of the cottages, and the applicant and his family's cars. The grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as the applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Mike, could you just add, um, that the, that covenant needs to be filed prior to the issuance of the CC for the garage?
And, um, that covenant needs to be filed before the...
Issuance of a certificate of compliance.
That, that file needs to be, uh, that needs to be filed before the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for the garage.
Second. Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Sessa.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I have a determination in the matter of the Harvey T. Edwards Jr. Irrevocable Trust for property located at one-ten Old Country Road in West Hampton, tax map number nine hundred three thirty-one three point one. I'm gonna relieve, I'm going to read the relief at the end, 'cause it's a lot, but basically they're looking for relief for existing structures and proposed structures on this extremely narrow, uh, very unusually shaped lot. The premises, I indicated the tax map number and the address. They do have a CO for a one-family dwelling porch and deck. We also did receive a letter, uh, from William Kelly, Construction Center manager. There additionally, besides the, um, the certain amount of setback relief, and I believe some pyramid relief, um, they're also asking for, uh, relief for a garage as to its size. So, in any case, as compared with the primary residence, so the letter indicates that the size of the proposed accessory building is sixty-eight percent, sixty-eight percent of the size of the existing residence. Type two pursuant to SECRA. Uh, testimony at the public hearing by Amy Edwards. She actually appeared twice, uh, consistent of explanation that she is seeking to legalize both existing and proposed structures on the property, including the existing residence, the existing garage, a proposed barn with an attached porch, and a proposed pool. She's also seeking a determination of this board as to whether the proposed barn, which is sixty-eight percent of the size of the primary residence, is a subordinate or incidental structure when compared to the primary residence based on its size and use, and pyramid relief for the existing garage and transfer of development rights, relief for the existing residence since the premises is located in an old filed map. Two unusual factors impact this application. The first factor is the unusual shape of this thin, narrow lot, which makes conforming to the zoning code problematic for the applicant. The second factor is that nearly all adjacent or nearby properties consist of vacant land, so the impact on adjacent properties to the relief being requested by the applicant will be minimal. The as-built garage was built by the father-in-law of Amy Edwards. It should be noted that the applicant is working with the tech, the planning board to preserve the northerly parcels and planting native vegetation to bring the applicant in compliance with the town code. Uh, the applicant submits that the existing and proposed structures will have a minimal impact on the adjacent par- parcels, and that the application, application will allow the applicant to legalize the existing and proposed structures on the property. There was no opposition to the relief. We initially find that the accessory, uh, the, the, the proposed barn being sixty-eight percent of the, sixty-eight percent of the size of the primary, uh, residence is, in fact, um, a, an accessory structure. The rest of the leaf passes the five-part test, even though some of the structures are, uh, as-built, therefore self-created hardship on some of them, um, exists, nevertheless passes the five-part test. Therefore, in these circumstances, for the reasons set forth herein, this board finds, under this set of facts and circumstances, that proposed garage is a subordinate or incidental building pursuant to zoning code three thirty-five definitions because its size is proportioned to the main dwelling and its use being sixty-eight percent of the size of the existing single-family dwelling. This board additionally grants relief from town code three thirty eleven, uh, for residential dis- districts table of dimensional regulations for an accessory distance from street, front yard, from the required one-hundred-and-ten feet to the proposed twenty-two point nine feet for the proposed barn with an attached porch, an accessory distance from street, front yard, from the required hundred feet to the proposed thirty-five point four feet, and rear yard setback from the required fifty feet to the proposed thirty-five point three feet for the proposed pool, a rear yard setback for the existing garage from thirty feet to five point three feet, and a front yard setback for the existing garage of one-hundred-and-ten feet to fifty-nine point nine feet. Town code three thirty-one fifteen D five continuance for an accessory side yard setback from the required thirty feet to the proposed twenty-five feet for the proposed barn with an attached part, porch. Uh, relief from town code three thirty seventy-six D and three thirty eighty-three C, placement of accessory buildings and yards to allow the proposed barn with an attached porch to be located within the required front yard of the principal building. Town code three thirty fifty-five, transfer develop, residential development rights procedures for a principal rear yard setback from the permitted twenty-seven point two-one feet to the proposed thirteen point six feet for the existing residence, and three thirty eighty-four D pyramid height for the proposed pyramid encroachment in the amount of four-hundred-and-eighteen cubic feet for the existing garage. These variances are granted for structures that will have the dimensional requirements and location as shown on the survey of hands-on surveyant by, by Marty Hand, surveyor, dated April twenty- dated April twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, last revised November fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Garage plans dated September twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen, last revised November first, two thousand and nineteen, by Jason Montgomery Ormond, architect, and the design plans of Allied Design Architectural and Engineering Group by Ronald Sutton, engineer, signed and sealed February twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, which were submitted with the application and incorporated herein, and any other permits the applicant requires for final approval of the existing residence and garage as they presently exist at the subject property and the proposed additional garage with attached porch and pool to be built at the subject property.
Second.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Sheriff, it's aye.
I have a decision for Jeffrey and Beth Gardner. I will read the relief at the end. Uh, this is, the premise is located at fifteen Sagmore Road in Hampton Bays, um, Suffolk County, tax map number nine hundred dash two-three-zero dash one dash twenty-three point three, approximately twenty-one thousand square feet, type-two under SECRE, and this parcel is in the RWV zoning district. At the public hearing, Susanna Herman, uh, testified to the applicant stating they seek approval for proposed additions to one of the dwellings on their waterfront property. Ms. Herman testified that the three dwellings are not large in nature. The first dwelling is two hundred and fourteen square feet, the middle dwelling is twenty-two-hundred square feet, and the third structure that needs the requested variances is nine hundred and eighty-six square feet. The applicants wish to expand the living space of the middle residence on the property by three hundred and seventy-five, uh, three, excuse me, three seventy point five square feet, which is an increase of ten point twen- uh, two-five percent. The applicants are looking to add a dining room, a first-floor master bedroom, and to add a foyer and separate entrance to a new bedroom. A previous variance allowed expansion of the living space of a different, different residence on the property by five hundred and fifty square feet, which was an increase of fifteen point seven percent. The total increase, which is less than fifty percent, uh, excuse me, the total increase of habitable space including the previous addition is nine hundred and twenty point five square feet or an increase of twenty-five point five percent, which is less than fifty percent. Ms. Herman also testified that the addition will result in a one thousand and thirty cubic feet of pyramid encroachment in addition to the existing five hundred and eight cubic feet. Pyra- pyramid nonconformity for a total, nonconformity of fifteen hundred and thirty-eight cubic feet. The additions to the existing residence are modest and mostly over the existing footprint of the existing house in debt. Ms. Herman also testified that permits have been approved by the CON Board, the, uh, DEC, and Suffolk County Health for an additional buffer, area drainage, and the ins- installation of a new in, uh, IA alternative, uh, system. Uh, the property and existing structures are pre-existing, nonconforming, so the only way to expand the residence in order to have a dining room and a master bedroom is through these variances. Ms. Herman also testified that prior variances have been issued, one on January twenty-one, two thousand and six- sixteen, for setback relief for a swimming pool to Jeffrey Garner and one in April sixteen, two thousand, um, for the expansion of habitable, habitable living space, uh, to Ronald Rochetta. This board is in receipt of a letter dated November twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, from the chairman of the CON Board noting that the project is consistent with modified wetlands permit number CB one nine zero four five. Uh, passes the five-part test, there was no opposition to this application, therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of town code three thirty-one, uh, dash one-one-six extension as it relates to section three thirty dash one six seven B, uh, for an expansion of a nonconforming use and section three thirty dash eighty-four D pyramid height for proposed encroachment in the amount of fifteen hundred thirty-eight cubic feet, uh, as shown on the survey prepared by L.K. McLean Associates PC dated November two thousand and eighteen, last revised September twenty-four, two thousand and eighteen, and the plans prepared by Cass Calder Smith, architect, and L.K. McLean Associates PC dated September twenty-four, two thousand and nineteen. The grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already, already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Done there? Second.
Mr. Hahn.
Yeah, aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mrs. De Sessa.
Aye.
Sheriff, it's aye. Motion closed?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.